I will call to order the meeting of the Planning Commission for Wednesday, May 18th, 2016. Commissioner Wu, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jim, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Eggleston.
Here.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Here.
Vice Chair Rulin.
Here.
Commissioner Crandall.
Here.
Commissioner Wu.
Here.
And Commissioner Smith.
Here.
And Chair Brown is absent this evening.
Thank you. Item four, special orders of business, we have none. Item five, the minutes of the meeting, we have three sets of minutes. For the study session of April 20th, 2016, are there any changes or motion?
If there aren't any changes, I move it.
Move by Eggleston, second by Michael. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Next one is the study session of May 4th, 2016.
If no changes, I move we adopt the minutes of the regular study session of May 4th, 2016.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. And the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting of May 4th, 2016. If no one else has a change, I did want, I did think that we might want to indicate on item 9A, that that item had been moved earlier in the evening because it made it look like I left at 8C and then I wasn't there and then I made comments under item 9A.
Right. And this statement on the front usually covers that.
Let me see.
The line of the statements that covers the fact that these were not heard in the order.
Okay, great. Thank you. Perfect.
Thank you.
So do we have a motion?
I'll move that we adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission of May 4th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Item six, oral and written communication. Members of the public may address the commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on the agenda. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and the city of residence, and make your presentations. Please limit your presentations to three minutes. Eileen, do we have any cards for item six?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right, seeing no one, we will move on to item seven, the consent calendar. We have one item in the consent calendar. Do we have any cards for the consent calendar? We do, so we will be pulling that item. So this item is the proposed parking restriction on Calle Oso, continued from our April 20th meeting. Tom, would you like to get us going?
Do you want to hear from the public who pulled the item first?
Sure. Okay. So we'll go ahead and open the public hearing and ask Helen McHugh, would you like to make a comment?
Planning Commissioners Helen McHugh, longtime city resident. I want to thank you for sending out notices to the Latino community, but apparently no one is here but me. And I also want to thank Tom for redoing some of the parking. Even though we're losing probably four to six parking places, it's better than the 10 that we were going to lose. So I appreciate what, all the work he put into it. I still disagree with the removal of those parking spaces, especially on street sweeping day, because it's going to force those people who can't get parking in that area down on my street on West Portal, and already it is inundated with cars on ticket day. Also, I just talked with Tom and I mentioned at the last meeting to red curb the very dangerous corner right there at Calle Oso. They did red curb just recently over here and over there, so that eliminated some of the difficulties in that area. And Tom said that they would red curb that area, and I would like to see that done, like tomorrow.
Tom will get right on that.
Also, there's another problem. School ends in four weeks, so this will not affect the school district or that area at all, not way until September, especially if this goes to City Council. So maybe there is a chance that the engineering can come up with a better plan on Calle Oso and West Portal to eliminate the problems that we have there. Fire trucks can't get through, police can't get through. Tom's been out there when school is out and going, and it's a disaster. On Calle Puente, there are two crossing guards. They don't pay attention to the traffic or the kids. They're talking to the kids. It is a disaster in the morning. So if you have time before school's out, go by Las Palmas School and get a good idea. But I want to thank Tom for not taking the 10 parking spaces that was first thought of.
Thank you. Did you have a question? Tom, please.
All right. I guess I'll just add that, as I mentioned the last time I was presenting the item, that we're working with the school and the school district to come up with a safety plan and an access plan for the school. So hopefully I'll hear back from the school district shortly on their proposed plan. Additionally, prior to this meeting, I was presenting that we were going to take about 100, or we were proposing to restrict about 116 linear feet of no parking on the northeastern side of Calle Oso. After revisiting that, we reduced that distance to 100 feet. And in addition, we're trying to encourage the traffic to turn right onto Oso and then exit through El Portal. So in re-looking at this, I thought it was appropriate to remove the restrictions on parking on the southwestern side of Oso, because we're trying to get, encourage people to go to the right and not to the left. So by doing that, there's really only a net loss of 30 linear foot of parking area. So that's essentially a little bit more than one parking, one car length. So that was, I think, an improvement. And I did talk with Helen prior to the meeting, and we will be red curbing that radius on the southwest corner of Calle Oso and El Portal.
Michael?
Tom, thanks for sending out those notices in the second language. Did you receive any calls or emails?
No.
No? Okay. Thank you. Welcome.
On the timing of this, she mentioned that school's almost out, and do you see that any more study would accomplish anything? Or do you think this is...
I've been out there many times with Helen and on my own and with the school officials, and I provided quite a laundry list of suggestions for the school district on how to improve the access to the school. So really, the next critical path is for the, I suggested that the school officials and the PTA jointly come up with a safety plan and with my assistance. And once the constituents in the school agree on that plan, then we can roll it out to the public. And hopefully that could be done before the next school year, but I'm not, it's really contingent upon them doing some work.
Thank you.
It really has to come from the constituents to make it work.
Are there any other questions from staff? All right, very good. Then we will enter our discussion or a motion.
If nobody has any comments, I move that we forward this to City Council as recommended by staff.
Second.
Motion by Crandall, second by Eggleston. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item eight, public hearings. The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed 10 minutes, and public testimony. To facilitate the meeting for all attendees, the public is asked to limit their individual presentation to three minutes. Following closure of the public hearing, the Planning Commission will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. We have one item in our public hearing, 253 Avenida Del Mar Minor Cultural Heritage Permit, 10-055, the Seer remodel. Public hearing to consider request for facade remodel, new covered balcony and roof deck to the front of an existing triplex located at 253 Avenida Del Mar within the mixed-use zoning district and architectural, pedestrian, central business district, and coastal zone overlays.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Amber Gregg, project planner. As Chair Rulin just stated, that this is a project that's a minor cultural heritage permit, and most of the time, minor cultural heritage permits are heard in the zoning administrator arena. But on this particular project, because it's on Del Mar, there are quite a number of modifications and standards that are being applied that typically aren't applied in this zone. The zoning administrator did kick it up for the Planning Commission's review. So this is a subject property as it is today. This is at 253 Avenida Del Mar, and it's right across the street from the community center, as well as adjacent to a historic resource that is just located to the left when looking at this property. Now, this project went through several design renditions, three in fact, with the deck on the front of the building. And the design review subcommittee reviewed all three of those in order to get it to comply as best as possible with the design guidelines. This is a remodel, it's not a rebuild, and therefore, the applicant tried to incorporate as many Spanish colonial revival elements as possible as it could, but because it's a remodel, to be a full Spanish colonial revival just wasn't possible with the scope of the work that they were proposing. So just to kind of quickly go through the history, this was the original rendition with the deck. The deck spanned across the entire front of the property and down the side of the building. In the beginning, there was concerns about the design elements and how it fit with Spanish colonial revival, so the applicant submitted this one. It was a more simplified version to make it fit more with the guidelines. And although it did fit more with a Spanish colonial revival theme, there were impacts on the historic resource, and so the applicant needed to go back and address those concerns and pull the deck back a little bit, which leads us to this elevation now, which is what we've been working with with the last two reviews that went to design review subcommittee, as well as the zoning administrator. So the goal of the applicant was to remodel the building, but also provide himself with some outdoor living space with basically reducing the deck on the left-hand side of the building. In this rendition, he also proposes a roof deck on top of the building. So the proposed deck comes out within nine inches of the front property line. That is a curved property line, so it's a little further setback once you go up north on the property a little bit, but the closest point is nine inches. The applicant again tried to put in as many Spanish colonial elements, but it's not a Spanish colonial design. The applicant is going to remodel the building with a smooth white stucco finish, the front and around the sides, paint the surrounds of the windows brown, add wrought iron details as well as tile caps. The roof element will be modified from the existing mansard and will be changed to have more of a traditional look with random mortar packing and single barrel tiles there. And then along the side of the building, you see the staircase that goes along the top. Now, when we are looking at the historic resource, the applicant put together this visual impact. Here you have the historic building, and this corner outlines the massing of the building as it exists today. And when we draw the line connecting the corner of the historic resource on the furthest back portion here, closest to the element, or closest to the new building, then that gives you a line of sight when viewed from the public right-of-way going, I'm going to call it north of Del Mar, I know we're a little backwards, but going north of Del Mar. So the applicant basically removed, and there's my thing, pulled that balcony back, so that way is, it was within that area, so there would not be any massing impacts or visual impacts when you were driving up Del Mar. Here you see the street on Del Mar. We basically, and this is a little off because it's a GIS, but we drew a line from the corner of the historic property to the corner of the existing development and drew that back. And then when you add the proposed project on top of it, again, the lines are a little off just because, you know, we're superimposing onto a GIS map, but this is to show where the deck is in relation to that line on the building. And then here we have a visual that the applicant put together of the proposed project when driving on Del Mar. So here's the front elevation. It was simplified a little bit from the last time that design review subcommittee did see it, and that was by reducing a bit of the trellis element there. And then here we have the south and north elevations. The north elevation, you can really see the balcony on that side, as well as in this area. And I need to note that the balcony design was also constrained by the garages that were down there. We tried to play with those columns as much as possible, but we also had to leave room for the cars to actually access the garages. The garages would need to stay there unless the development was actually torn down and rebuilt, so we worked around those as best as possible. But in reviewing a project like this, we also need to look at the neighborhood context. It's part of the findings that you have to make tonight on a minor cultural heritage permit. And this is a very interesting part of Del Mar. There are about seven units or seven properties that are basically residential, and of those seven, this project happens to be right in the middle of those homes. They are mostly residences with the exception of the historic property next door that does have a commercial component to it. And those setbacks range from 12 to 20 feet. They get a little closer as you go up, and then once you pass that, you hit Cafe Mimosa, which is a restaurant that comes all the way out to the public right-of-way. But this will be the first project that utilizes the mixed-use development standards. It is still within the central business district zoning. This one and the project right next to it is until it transfers into just the mixed-use zone for residential that allows residential uses on there and is no longer the central business district. So that's important to note as well. And I just wanted to give a couple pictures showing what this setback looks like when looking up Del Mar. And then this is getting, as you get further up, you see that these buildings get a little closer. And then you have the bottom one that is the property as well as the historic property. So that concludes staff's presentation. It goes in a lot more detail in your staff report, and I'm more than happy to answer any of those questions. And I also wanted to note that we did receive a letter from Larry Colbertson that is located on the dais for your consideration tonight. And if you have any questions, staff and the applicant are happy to answer them.
Very good. Wayne, do you have a question?
Yes. Could you put that visual up there again that shows it driving up Del Mar?
Yes.
That one there, yes. So it's about nine inches back from the sidewalk, is that correct?
On this side, that's correct. From the public right-of-way.
Uh-huh. And all the other residential buildings on that, in that area are set back 12 to 20 feet?
That's correct.
Are there any on the 300 block that are set that close to the sidewalk residential buildings that you are aware of?
Not till you cross the, cross the veil, do they get closer to the public right-of-way again.
Are there any nine inches like that from the public right-of-way?
Within the seven units, no. And further down, I'm not sure how close that closest one is.
All right, thank you.
Zen?
Yes, can we go back to the first page where you showed the street?
The first page, I'm sorry?
Yeah, first page of your presentation.
This one?
All the way, no. Yeah.
Okay.
The fence on the, on the left side, does that belong to the subject property owner?
The, this area here?
Yes.
That you see the shrubs?
Uh-huh.
That is on the property line?
Who owns it?
The neighbor owns.
The neighbor owns the?
Yeah, that fence.
The entire fence?
And that's their green, that's their tree as well.
Okay.
Okay. And then on the, where the sidewalk interfaced with the terracotta colored paving, is that the property line? There's a white boundary.
The line here?
No, no, no. Parallel to the bottom of the image, that white line, is that property line?
I believe so, because I think we, the city did the improvements with the pavers up until there, but let me just check my plans really quickly. Or maybe Ian can tell me before I get there. I'm sorry?
There's 10 feet in the back third to the...
Thank you.
What?
No, the sidewalk is eight.
Okay.
From, from the red color to the leading edge of the curb stone, that's eight feet. So I want to where is, where exactly is the property line?
And then it would be two feet back. The sidewalk is eight and it's two feet back from there.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it could be that the dimension of 10 feet is incorrect, because I look at that, I measured on the map, the setback of the building is 17 exactly.
The dimension shows the edge of the sidewalk, which is the curb face, 10 feet back to the property.
Right.
That should be correct, because I would imagine that it would be a reasonable, this is what the plans are, so.
We can have the engineer comment.
They are lots of building that, this 100 block, for example, they sit on this line.
What's that?
They sit on the back of the sidewalk. So my understanding is that white line is exactly where the property line is. If that's true, then the sidewalk is not 10 feet.
The back of sidewalk is almost never where the end of the property, public right-of-way is, almost never. On, on the upper block of Del Mar, where we actually put the curb in, those are probably more reflective of the property lines up there. And to this section, it, you know, according to the plans, it's two feet back from the sidewalk. If you said, I'm just saying, based on what you told me, you said you measured the sidewalk as eight feet wide. Did you measure just the sidewalk or from the curb face back?
From the, from the curb face to the back of the sidewalk, that's eight feet.
So then it would have been two feet behind it.
Well, that cannot be true, because from the curb...
Why not?
From that back of...
Why can't that be true? It shows it on the plans.
Right, because from the back of the sidewalk to the, to the face of the garage, that's 17 feet. That's also correct.
So the face, it's saying that the existing is 14 feet, but you know, we also have the engineer here who prepared the plans, so I'm more than happy to defer to him, since he's the one who...
This says 16 foot six. 10 off of 26 six.
16 six, yeah, that's 17.
Yeah, 26 six, you're right. From the closest point to the corner. Bartra?
Well, that's, that's related to the curb cut and the easement issue, because if that line is a property line, then we don't have enough, enough dimension to accommodate that. We'll talk about that later, but...
Yeah, why don't we save that one for the, for the engineer and finish with questions for staff? Michael, did you have a question?
Yeah. On the required parking, the development standard is seven, and apparently you have three garages and then three spots in front of that for a total of six only.
That's correct.
Are we short one?
We are, but it's illegal non-conforming use, and they're not expanding the habitable area. If they were, they would still be able to apply for a minor architectural permit or add it to the minor cultural heritage permit for an addition up to 50%, but they're not adding any habitable area, so therefore, their parking is legal. It's just non-conforming.
All right. If this was a short-term vacation rental, how many parking spaces would it need to accommodate?
The way the, the law currently reads right now?
Yeah, the way we just fiddle with it.
Well, the way that the law currently reads is that however many parking, legal parking spaces that you have is what you're limited to on the STLU application permit, and then your occupancy is based on the number of bedrooms that you have. Now, in the future, that is being modified, so if you cannot meet your parking requirement, then you won't be able to have an STLU.
Okay. Does the owner of the property live in this building?
It's my understanding that the owner of the property lives in the front unit.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Michael?
I have a question, Amber, and maybe the engineer can answer this best. Was there a reason for the size of this deck? Was there a particular, did we have access constraints or, or was just, just a design that they liked? They felt like they wanted to maximize that footprint?
I'll leave that to the applicant to answer, but it's my understanding that they wanted a usable front area, but again, I'll leave that to him.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff at this time? No, then we'll invite the applicant to come up and make a presentation if you'd like.
My name is Ian Buckin. I'm the design consultant and structural engineer on the project. I'd first like to explain how we came upon the design. You were asking how and why it is, the size it is. Mr. Seer lives in the second-story front unit of the residential triplex building, and currently, the only outdoor space is a four-foot-wide deck on the side, which is hardly big enough to put a couple of chairs and table and get by. And he also would like to have an out, like patio, outdoor dining, sitting area, so that was where the project began. He wants to create a usable outdoor space and access the views up and down Del Mar. He'd also very much like to improve the plain, ugly, unattractive architecture of the existing building, which is identical to the one located on the other side of the historic resource, and at least a dozen more that I've seen around town that just got spread throughout the Pier Bowl area. With the property being located within the MU3 zone with the allowable zero-foot setbacks, in April 2015, we initially proposed the deck that you saw, the complete wide deck across the whole width. After reviewing the design, design review staff committee and staff, the Commissioners, expressed concern, first of all, with some of the detailing that we modified, and then it came up with the massing impact to the historic building, which is when we just pulled the deck back from that historic side. And then in our next meeting, Mr. Petras came up with the idea of having this view corridor that we would connect the corners of the buildings and stay outside of that, which would protect the view as much as possible of the historic building while also allowing Mr. Seer to have the deck that he was proposing to have. One of the major design challenges, which is, gets to the size of the deck, was the three garages that are there, and they're very close together. One of the issues we had was the columns were, seemed fairly small, and we tried to make them as large as possible. And the other issue is that we had to stay in between those garage spaces, so we ended up going a little bit beyond, further away from that view corridor because the column needed to line up with the garage. And the other issue was if we placed, the reason it's far forward is that if we had placed the columns halfway up the driveway, that car that would want to pull in there, it would be very difficult for passengers to open up and unload their car and would then require them to park on the sidewalk or on Del Mar to get out before entering the tiny garages that are there, the very, very small garages that are existing. So as Amber said, we pulled back the, we initially had, had it as far forward as we could, we pulled it back to nine inches at that southern corner, and then, which is about two and a half inches at the northern col, two and a half feet at the northern column away from what we think is, what we've got as the property line. So we understand the importance of this being on Del Mar, adjacent to and across the street from the two of the most beautiful historic resources, and through this process, I believe we've made every effort to work closely with staff, complying with all their requests, being sensitive to historic buildings, and staff actually expressed to us that they, they felt satisfied with, that we had met standards and to, that they could approve it, the cultural heritage aspect, but the concern was this mixed-use residential-only building in a mixed-use and setback issues that we're, we're now discussing, I believe. So it's my, my understanding that that is really the issue that, that brought us to this point, and I would propose that, that mixed-use zone was created and ends one, one lot south of our lot, and it was intentionally put that way. If you look at the zoning map... it's directly across from the corner of the cultural, I mean, the, um, the, uh, what it, which, the building across the spacing on the community center.
Yeah.
So it seemed intentional that from that point forward, these standards were intended to be applied to that zone. And I would, I kind of, it seems to me that it's a transitional location. The bus stop is located right there, it's the beginning, the community center is there, and the, the center business district, the pedestrian-oriented business district starts at that point, so I see this building as being a transitional element architecturally, complying with the Spanish colonial style, creating sort of an entrance to the, to the central downtown area. It's where the bus stop is, it's a, a nice, it seems to make sense that that should be applied from that point moving forward. The, the buildings to the south are clearly oriented away from the downtown area. What, what I think we've proposed is a deck that sort of orients itself looking up towards Del Mar, provides a pedestrian-oriented design with the arched tile elements and the wrought iron and, you know, it sort of is the beginning of the rest of the buildings up the street that are all right out to that point. And, um, in closing, I'd like to say, you know, in a perfect world, it would be a good thing if neither of those buildings were built where they are. And, um, that not being the case, and also not being reasonable or practical to ask Mr. Seer to demolish and replace his building, he is willing to go to great lengths, I believe, to upgrade the architecture of the building to more closely represent Spanish colonial revival style. We're proposing to replace the token mansard roof with the traditional three-and-twelve pitch Spanish terracotta roof, add wooden trellises on the front and side of the deck, replace the existing small front bedroom window with the Juliet balcony and the more, the better proportioned doors, and, um, add the column and corbelled elements around the, the garages to help reduce the impact of that second-story cantilevering over the, the front of the garages, and also refinish the entire building in a smooth white coat stucco, to try to bring it as much as possible into conformance with the Spanish colonial style. So, um, over the past twelve months, I think we've worked closely and in good faith with the staff and DRC commissioners, complete with a design that meets all of the zoning requirements, satisfies the client's desire for an outdoor living space, and transforms an ugly building into an interesting Spanish colonial revival influenced design that will complement the surrounding historic resources. We thank you for consideration, and we hope that you can see this as a win-win for both the city and Mr. Seer. I'll be available for comments.
Thank you. Zen, did you want to complete your question? Did you have any questions of the, of the architect regarding the setback calculation?
Yeah, I just want to like to confirm, because I look at the setback image, I walked the site, I measured the distance from this building to the back of the sidewalk. That's the same as what your drawing indicate, that's sixteen feet, sixteen, plus minus seventeen. So that's accurate. So the back of the sidewalk must be the property line. That's my understa- my understanding. I may be wrong, I'm not sure, but I don't know where the source of your base map. But if that's true, then the sidewalk has only eight feet, it's not wide enough to accommodate the curb cut, well, we asked the sidewalk to go up and around the curb cut, and then there wouldn't be enough dimension, there would be some easement required. So I, I'm not sure about...
I got, the information from where the property lines were, I got from Zach Ponton in the engineering department, talking to him about distance back from the face of curb. And from what I, my understanding, the, the existing, all of the tile, I mean, all of the paver sidewalks there, the drive approaches were done too long, and they actually go into the sidewalk, so we're, we will be pulling back the drive approach and providing a level, you know, less than two percent cross slope sidewalk in front of that.
Right, because the curb stone is about a six inches tall, and the curb cut is limited to a ten percent. So you need a five feet to accommodate that curb cut. Then the engineering department asked for four feet wide sidewalk, up and around the curb cut, so that's a total dimension of about nine feet. It's close enough, but I just want to get clarification that we do have enough dimension there to accommodate both.
I can see that after the plans were submitted, they were reviewed by our engineering development team to make sure that they complied with what the required, um, setback was, or what the public right of way actually was. So Zach Ponton did verify the plans as far as what the public right of way width is there, um, and the requirements for the sidewalk in that area. I don't know if that helps answer your question, but I just wanted you to know that the engineering division did review that.
Yeah, it will help. Thank you very much. I actually made some comments before on different projects. In downtown area, where you have a short, where you have a driveway apron at about eighteen or seventeen, then if we add some easement to accommodate that pedestrian walkway up and around, you reduce the depth of the space in front of the garage. So well-intended for the accessibility of the pedestrian, but at, at the same time, you put, you may force a car to, to, to park on the street, so there are two, two goals that's conflicting with each other. And I would propose that maybe the engineering department and the planning department to work together to figure out an alternative way for those accessible pedestrian walk, because there are some ways, um, Frank, you, Tom, you mentioned sad design. And it's possible that we can have a multiple curve or some sort of thing without asking easement, but to, that will hurt the parking. It's a little off the point, but, thank you.
Michael, question?
Yes, uh, Mr. Buckin, I have a question for you about the railing areas on the deck, and currently we're, we're seeing railing on all three sides. Just below those railings, there's a what appears to be a wall, and I'm sorry, I don't have the site plan in front of me at the moment, but can you tell me what that dimension is? From the bottom of the railing to the top, or I'm sorry, the top of the tile, and then the stucco wall down to the floor?
The, the, the guard, top of the metal guardrail is forty-two inches above the deck's surface.
Okay.
And I believe that the, the lower solid portion is about thirty inches.
Thirty inches. Okay. Is there any reason why that couldn't have been just one open railing, rather than enclosing?
Yeah, we, we'd actually talked to staff about that, and it, we both decided that it would be better, I think, to have a deck, especially on Del Mar, without being able to look directly up and see all the stuff that might potentially be, be there. It's a cleaner look than having an open guardrail going all the way down, and looking up and seeing a table and whatever else is sitting on the deck. So that was, that's where that came from.
Okay. And, uh, second part of my question is the lighting location. You've got a, a sconce there at the arched opening, which unfortunately is adjacent to a streetlight. Did you, did you explore that and how that relationship would, would look once both are illuminated? How would that, how would that space feel?
Not, not in relation to the, to the streetlight, no, just I thought it was a nice element in that lighting of the entry of the, of the building itself.
Yeah. Could there be another location for that light, or would?
On one of the previous designs, I believe we had sconce lights on the columns themselves, and then when we went to, to reduce that, we decided it would be nice to have this element there. It's, if that's something that is problematic, it's something we can definitely modify.
Well, the only reason I'm, I'm looking at it is because it looks to be a large sconce, and there's a large lantern just feet from it. Uh, maybe, I don't know, five feet away.
Mm-hmm.
Probably more than five feet you've got across the sidewalk, but it's still, it's close, and in terms of, you know, the illuminated environment, that's going to be an interesting look. It's just going to be, there's going to be a lot of lights happening.
I think the light more functions, I was showing it's an entrance than an actual, it's more of a decorative element than probably one that's needed, especially since you mentioned that there's the streetlight there. There's probably other ways to treat it, if they wanted, if the planning commission wanted to remove that element, we could do other design elements to still accomplish the same thing. They, if they still wanted a less conspicuous light, they could, you know, put a, you know, can in here just to kind of light the entrance for the-
That might be something.
So you could get rid of that. If that's, that's an option the planning commission wanted to consider. There's other ways of designing.
You had a photo simulation of, of image in the presentation, this one right here. This kind of tells a story, and that's, that's what, that's what struck my, my interest there, and I think that they seem to, on a standalone, it looks great, but I think in reality, there could be some competition happening there.
Understood.
I would like to know about the lighting itself. What, what sort of lighting is being considered inside the, the globe itself?
We, well, work with staff on that, we haven't, we haven't gotten that far.
Thank you.
Uh, any other questions of the applicant? And I did actually have a, a quick question for staff. I noticed the historic building,
Thank you.
there to the left.
Mm-hmm.
It was a color that is a little unusual, almost a yellowish. Is that a, is that like an, an accepted color for our historic buildings, one of part of the color palette? Because usually we have the white or sometimes the beige.
I'll defer to our historic preservation officer, who happens to be sitting right here.
I, you know, we have some other varying colors on these buildings. Typically, though, we stick with the straight white in San Clemente. I, I don't know when that building was painted into a yellow.
Okay, I just didn't know if it was, it was a HIPAA requirement for it or something like that to go to white eventually.
No, probably just the taste of the owner.
Okay. Michael?
Yeah, I have another question of staff. Well, with this new zoning, I guess it's okay for the building, at least within its zoning, to be, to come right up to the sidewalk, zero setback. And it could be a large square building. But we're looking for minor cultural permit here. And I'm trying to figure out how these two things are diametrically opposed. We've zoned this thing for a big, potentially a big box, but then now we're saying that if you did that, you're going to hide this historical house, and that's unacceptable. Is that, is that really the issue at hand?
We have a zoning district that covers many, many properties besides this one. This one just happens to be located adjacent to a historic resource. So you have conflicting goals, in essence. You have a pedestrian and architectural overlay and a central business district that says, we want to promote pedestrian activity, and we want to have, um, projects that come out to the public right of way. But then when you have historic resource right next to it, then you have the conflict of, well, we don't want to have any massing impacts on that very valuable historic resource. So it's a very delicate balance. In addition to that, then you have, you know, this small segment of the street that has a greater setback than, you know, the other developments that go the rest of the way, all the way up Del Mar. So when you're looking at, we didn't zone this one property to be able to go all the way to the front setback and not think about the, the historic resource. It's just within a zoning district that happens to be adjacent to a historic resource.
So I would, I would take that as, even though it's, it's a mixed-use zone, it could be a box right up to the front of the sidewalk, the fact that it's next to a historical resource, uh, that's probably not allowed. So the historical resource seems to be trumping the, the code in this case. Is that correct?
It's just one of the considerations. It doesn't trump, all the, all the sections of the code have, you know, let's say, equal weight. There's not, there's nothing in the code that says one shall take precedent over the other. The idea is you, you consider all the different provisions in the code, and if some seem to be at odds, then you just, you try and balance it. The, the, there isn't anything that says in the code that you can't block a view of a historic resource. What it says is you have to retain the historic, um, character or the actual, you know, the value of the resource itself. Now typically, blocking a public view of a resource does have some impact on the value of the resource. So that's why we try and set things back. There are some cases where there's, you know, there has been some cases where the building on the historic resource is so far back that it's impossible not to develop without, you know, having some impact on the public view. In those cases, you would say, well, that would be nice, but if we made them do that, they would lose, you know, a reasonable development right on the property, so therefore they can come forward. But just need to design it very sensitively. So there's a number of things, and each case is slightly different. And in, you know, this case, there was room, you know, based on what he wanted to do, to pull the deck back, so that was a logical way to limit any kind of impact on the resource.
Okay, thank you.
Bert?
Amber, you explained exactly what Michael was concerned about. Can you go to the very first elevation? Okay, that's what we've got. The next one is what is allowed by the zoning district, or the zoning code now. That is, that meets all the requirements except for being sensitive to the historic element. And then going, I think it's two more slides. That's what evolved by keeping a view of the historic element from across the street on the, uh, historic property across the street. So it's basically an end result of trying to accommodate every single a lot of chefs in the kitchen.
Okay, any other questions of staff or the applicant at this time? If not, I will, I'm sorry.
The owner would like to speak.
Oh, absolutely, please, come up.
Thank you, and I'll, I'll keep this quick. I think Amber and Ian have done a great job, and I want to thank you all for considering this, you know, and taking it so seriously. We've been working close with Mr. Petches and his team, and, um, I've been going through this. So there were a couple of questions, I'm not sure they were fully answered, so I just want to make sure we, we hit them. Uh, Mr. Eggleston was asking about the size of the deck and why does it have to be this size? So one of them is what Ian was talking about of where the columns have to line up for, to be able to unload a vehicle. But also, my goal is to have an outdoor fire pit and have to, have, have chairs around it. So there's like a ten, eleven, I mean, but you get the chairs, and I mean, I've looked for the smallest fire pit, and then you need a ledge to put your, your food down on, and then the chair, so it's, and so it, that is one of the bigger pushes to have it this. And if you saw the original one, we started with a lot of square footage in front, and so now we've down to just a fire pit. And I might have a bar stool, uh, you know, set up where I can have a few dining spots too, but it's, it's been a compromise. The, uh, the other thing I wanted to just make sure was represented properly. Uh, Amber was talking about how there were seven buildings there, three of them were residences and one's a historic building, and that that was the context under which we were looking at setbacks. I don't believe that that's an appropriate, uh, perspective or context for this discussion, because it's, the zoning is for multi-use three-point-O, which is the, the central business district zoning. And that ends one property south of me. And so it's really the one next to me, my property, the historic item, which is commercial, and then there are two other residences, so there are four of them. And then if you take my block within the zone of multi-use three-point-O, I went and measured the frontage, and it's seventy-eight percent have no setback. So in terms of representative of my zone and my block, seventy-eight percent are right out to the curb. And so zoning, my understanding of zoning, I'm not a attorney, but is it's, it's about the zone and not the actual use. Just because it's residential doesn't make a difference if it's zoned for multi-use and multi-use is a acceptable, you know, application of multi-use. So I just wanted to sort of throw that in there. And then, uh, that's, that was pretty much it. I mean, we've been working very hard with the city in good faith, many, many iterations. The rules were set there, we knew it was multi-use three-point-O zoning. We know, in fact, that zone had been readdressed recently and deliberately put that way. Uh, this was my intent of buy, of using the building when I bought it. This is, um, you know, these are the rules we've been working on. I've spent over seventeen thousand dollars on engineering and drawings and, and going through this, and I understand, Del Mar's the crown jewel of San Clemente, I mean, that's one of the reasons I live on Del Mar. And so I understand the importance, and I understand the process, and I under, I respect all of this. It's just, I want you guys to sort of put yourself in my shoes if you can and say, okay, we've been walking down this road for a year, and it's not until now that someone says, well, wait a minute, maybe the rules have unintended consequences. You know, are we, are we okay with this? So, um, so with that, I would, I would really like you to, um, consider my, my situation and hopefully see how much we've compromised and worked closely with the city to come up- and hopefully see how much we've compromised and worked closely with the city to come up with that, you know, a building that's better looking, something that is representative of the neighborhood, something that makes, you know, good use of the property I built with the ocean view and the breeze, and have some outdoor space rather than this four-foot balcony. And if you're worried about it setting precedence and so on, there are only three other residences in this very finite, multi-use 3.0 business district zone. So I don't think that opens the door for a precedent or other problems, or if it does, you can close that loophole down. So anyway, again, thank you very much for your time. I really appreciate it. Any questions for me?
I do have a question.
Sure.
I appreciate you working with the Design Review Subcommittee on this. And you're not adding any square footage to the building. The building is staying the same. You're adding outdoor living space.
That's right.
And is there anything, and this is going to set the tone of our discussion on this. One of our options is that it stays the way it is. And this is an incentive for you to improve the building and improve the neighborhood.
Exactly.
Is there anything short of this that would be acceptable to you where we'd still see a remodel of the main building?
You know, the side doesn't have the ocean view. And it's coming out in front has the dimensions, too, to be able to do a fire pit. And coming out in front lets me use my kitchen, and I don't have to build an outdoor kitchen. It's an old building. I can't really put much on the roof. Like, I want to, you know, roof deck would be a better view, but it's removed now. I've got to do an outdoor kitchen. It won't support the weight. Like, we've gone so many different iterations, and this seems to be the balance of, you know, a difficult situation. But I, you know, I think the building would be much better looking this way than the stock, the way it is now. It's, you know, it's pretty, you know, big box.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Thank you.
I did have one question.
Oh, I beg your pardon.
It's okay, that's fine. Regarding the lighting discussion, what are your thoughts on minimizing the lighting?
We will do anything that makes the planning happy. We've been that way all along. We could do the smaller ones. We could put it underneath. The lighting's not an issue, like you said, with the streetlight there. No problem. And that tile color showing up funny up here, it wouldn't be that neon blue. I mean, we are happy to make this look beautiful by all, everyone, I mean, on the Architectural Review and make it Spanish and...
Am I recalling correctly, was that like a Catalina-style tile that you were going to be doing over there? Is that what was decided?
The tile samples I have are like a cobalt, like a very traditional Mexican blue cobalt. You'll see it in Casa Romantica and everywhere, you know.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out and working with us, and staff to come up with such a nice-looking project.
Thank you. I really appreciate it.
All right. Any other questions of staff, the applicant, the engineer? If not, I will open the public hearing. And the first card I have is Bill Redding. Oh, I beg your pardon. This, it's 9A, 9A. Our secretary's forgiven. We'll come to those. Thank you. So I have one card for this item. Larry Culbertson, please. And if anyone else wants to speak to this item, please fill out a card and bring it to Ily.
Good evening, Commissioners. I sent you a letter, and I just want to make a few, kind of condensed form of a few of the comments that I put in that letter. My concerns center on the scale and massing of this project, the inadequate parking, and the use of the property as a vacation rental. With respect to the scale and massing, the subject property has a floor area ratio almost three times the historic resource next door at 251 Avenida Del Mar. And that's before you add the balcony and the roof deck. The incompatibility of the scale and massing between the two buildings is intensified by the location of the triplex on the lot. The triplex is set back 17 feet from the sidewalk. The one-story element of the historic house that is nearest to the triplex is set back 28 feet from the sidewalk. The visual impact of the 11-foot setback difference is magnified by the height differential between the two buildings. Further incursion into the setback by the addition of a deck would further hide the recessed porch and the beautiful arches of the oley that make the disparity of the scale and massing even greater. Exhibit 3, the sightline diagram, does not give an accurate presentation of what the visual impact would be. 251 Avenida Del Mar is visible from Avenida Del Mar over 200 feet west of Caie Seville. The balcony addition would eliminate the view until you hit that sightline. From the community center, the historic resource would indeed be seen, but would be dwarfed by this project. Parking is a huge issue on Avenida Del Mar, and it's only getting worse. The staff report indicated on Table 1 that the proposed project has six parking spaces. It was my understanding that the driveway spaces did not count toward the required spaces. In any case, the parking is substandard, and any addition that would result in more automobiles being associated with this property should not be permitted. I raised the issue of that two of the three units are being used as vacation rentals. Staff did not address this issue. Usex, more than most people in town, know how problematic vacation rentals are. The addition of two large outside party decks, one highly visible, is not in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. It would be detrimental to the orderly and harmonious development of the city, and the project would have a negative visual and physical impact upon the historic resources next door and across the street. The staff analysis on Page 6 states the project is located in the center of seven developments that have approximately 12- to 20-foot front yard setbacks. And it goes on to say, "Based on development standards, it could be anticipated that this segment of residential developments will be redeveloped with a zero front yard setback." And this is just the first development to do so. In the next paragraph, the report admits, "There is some question as to the project is in character with the immediate developments." It's not. It would stand out, and it would stick out, as a planning blunder." I'm running out of time, so I just want to say that there's no economic value to replacing any of those seven. They're all triplex, fourplexes, bigger than anything that would be allowed. So they're going to be there for a very long time. 253 Avenida Del Mar, one last sentence. 253 Avenida Del Mar needs to remain with the 17-foot setback to help facilitate that transition and to not negatively impact the historic resource. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who's interested in speaking to this issue? Then I will close the public hearing. And there was one question that came up that I heard in the public hearing about parking and how the driveway parking counts for this. Maybe you can speak to that, Amber?
So what the zoning ordinance says is that garages need to be set back 18 feet. And any parking that's located in the required front yard setback does not count towards that parking. Well, if you have a traditional residential development, that would be true, where you would have to stay out of the front yard setback. But in this zone, it's a zero front yard setback requirement, so you can still count that area of the 18 feet in front of the garage. No? Oh, I'm sorry. So it's the one, it's still legal nonconforming with one-car garage, but the parking area in front of it is approximately, you can still fit a car within there, but it does not count as legal parking?
So, well, you can physically fit a car, but are you saying it doesn't count as legal?
That's correct.
Oh, I see. So we're not counting as legal parking because it's legal nonconforming?
Exactly.
So they can still park there because it's nonconforming? Or you can count those parking spaces because it's nonconforming? Is that...
You don't count them, but you can utilize them. The code doesn't say you cannot park in those areas. It's just not counted as an official legal parking space.
Okay. And what does the staff report say?
So the staff report, I think, is maybe a little bit misleading?
Yes.
It's three legal parking spaces for this project. But it's still allowed because it's a nonconforming use. It's nonconforming, at least because of parking, maybe some other reasons, too. But because of parking, that doesn't restrict it from being redesigned because they're not adding, what is it, more than 50% of the total square? They're actually not adding any square footage to the building. So it's allowed to happen with the existing nonconforming parking standard.
Okay. And maybe you could just remind us, too, since the subject of STUUs were brought up, and I know this was just approved, so it's a new thing. Does the fact that there is or may be vacation rentals here affect how it can be parked?
So again, horn transition of two different laws going into effect. So you have the existing law that he was an existing short-term vacation rental and or lodging unit. And that is restricted to the amount of cars you can have onsite based on your parking. So in his case, he's allowed to have one car. He's allowed to advertise it for one parking space. And then depending on the other units, his unit, I believe, is a three-bedroom, but the other units have less bedrooms to it. So then that does the occupancy and limits the occupancy. So if you have a two-bedroom, you could have a maximum of six people, but you would still only be limited to one parking space, is how the existing code is written. But the new code that goes into effect is different for stars, which Jim Petches worked on, and he can answer that better.
It really has no effect on this application. It's a separate issue. So it's a land use issue, just like if you were building a building. It could be a retail, it could be a restaurant, it could be whatever else down the line. He just has to conform to all the rules and regulations of the new STLU ordinance. And if he can't, then he won't be able to have one. If he can, then he can.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Zen, did you have a question? No, I'm sorry. Michael?
Okay, I just want to take a little harder look at it than that, Jim. You said it's two different things. Well, we know about short-term vacation rentals, and we know that it's allowed in this zone, and we also allowed with an owner living in a building to do this. So certainly meets those requirements. But will it actually meet the requirement for parking under the new standards?
The application is not for an STLU permit. We're not considering that.
I know. I'm asking the question that if it was, would this parking meet those requirements?
It really depends on what he's asking for. There's lots of different types of STLU permits. Under the current code, he would be, he can do an STLU because he's, I believe, in the allowed zone. He would be limited by the number of parking spaces he can provide. If he's living in one unit, he's going to be limited because, I don't quote me on this because I don't know the details of every nuance of the code, but he would have to provide the parking first for his unit, and then whatever's left over, he could use for the other two units. And it looks like he has, you know, one parking space per unit in this case, so he would be limited to four occupants per unit based on the STLU code. But again, that has nothing to do with the consideration of what's before you tonight.
Yeah, no, I know.
All right. So we'll open Planning Commission discussion. Does anyone want to get started? Zen?
I think overall, it's a substantial improvement to the street appearance. I like it. And I don't mind, even the pedestrian archway is sitting right along the line. And I appreciate the designer and applicant to be willing to work with the city to address their concern of the impact from the building massing to the historic building. With that said, I do have a minor modification I'd like to make to this project. Jim, if you can show the image I have. This image is taken, I was standing right at the street corner of Del Mar and Caie Sevilla, at the corner of the community center. So I think that's very representative and is the most important node for people to look at this building. It's for pedestrian, and it's at the important intersection. If we were to use different street corners, that would make it much harder. So this is the easiest one. So as we can see that the entry porch of that historic building is not really very visible because the fence is there, blocking most of it. So we're looking at the potential impact from the building massing to the historic building is toward the second-story building massing. There's a gable end, and there's a corner there where the rake becomes E. So that's what I'm thinking about. So let's go to the second image. Yes, you do.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm here, right?
Yes. So the current view corridor connects point A and point D. Now, A is the corner of the porch. D is the corner of the existing building on the second level. For someone to follow this sightline, to look at the historic building, they have to take a bird's eye view from the air. So if we make it more realistic, they should be from a pedestrian height. So what I would, based on what we just saw, point C is a corner of the second-story building massing of the historic building. So instead of AD, I would use CD connection, line CD as the sightline. That reflects the more realistic and accurate sightline from the street. One may argue that we can use AB. That will put more restriction on the proposed development. But I think, first of all, I think the flooring out at the point B is important because we want to give that archway a good depth for the socket. And then second, the view of that point A is pretty much blocked by the fence. I wish the fence can be lower, but it's not the applicant's property, so that... So the easiest sightline is the line CD. As we can see, there's a little triangle corner shaded. Yes, and that's outside of the sightline. So my proposal is to pull that corner back. Looks like if you have two and a half, two and a half feet over there, if you pull just that corner along with the projected balcony on the second level, pull it back by another two and a half, make the building setback at that point about five feet, then you'll be okay. And that's the only modification I would like to suggest. And that is to ask the setback at the northwest corner to be five feet. And that's a condition for me to vote for it. Thank you.
Okay. Michael?
Okay. I'd like to applaud this project and the degree of improvement that the project brings to the streetscape on Del Mar. I think that it's an excellent use of space, and I'm in favor of creating usable outdoor space whenever possible. This is why we're here. And, you know, in this coastal city, we want to enjoy the outdoors. So this project works to that end. However, there was an attempt here to introduce some architectural diversity to the streetscape along Del Mar. And I think that standing alone, it is a good attempt. But in relation to the other architectural elements along this portion of Del Mar, it leaves a little, I think it doesn't quite meet the objective here. And that objective would be to really maintain the vision we have for our scale and our streetscape along Del Mar. We want diversity in the architectural flavor. We want to maintain that Spanish village-by-the-sea feel. But we also, more importantly, really want to protect the scale, the human scale, as experienced from a pedestrian on the sidewalk. And for that reason, I'm a little concerned, and I'm conflicted because we're meeting the intent of the code here, and we're meeting the development standards for the use, but we're creating an element that is somewhat imposing. And I think there could be some more work to this project to reduce those impacts to folks that are walking along Del Mar. One way would be to possibly remove those pony walls, those lower walls below the railings, to open that up a little, get a little more light. I understand the applicant's need, and it makes sense. But I think the greater need is for... is for the, you know, integration into the built environment and to our living space along Del Mar. And that would be a nice compromise to help minimize this, maintain the use as proposed, keep the footprint, but to really lessen the impact of this new, in my opinion, imposing element that's now at the front edge, at the property line. Another, another element we discussed is the lighting and I appreciate the applicant's willingness to address that. Again, standing alone, that lighting element's interesting, but I think it would conflict with the nightscape that's going to happen there. When that street lantern is illuminated, it's going to, it's going to create confusion to the eye. I think it's going to be overkill on the lighting and it just, it's an unfortunate conflict there of two necessary elements. Now, what, what we have here is an opportunity to address one of them because it's not there yet. So by coming up with a new lighting design, you know, you're addressing the need for lighting, creating a safe environment, but you can do it in a way that doesn't create that conflict that we've, we've discussed. Maybe smaller can lights inside the arches. And I didn't see a lighting design for this project, but even all the arches with the same intensity of lighting in a can format under the arches could create a very interesting enhancement to the architecture at night, yet not conflict with the, what will prove to be a very bright situation with that streetlight there. So I appreciate the applicant's willingness to, to work on the, on the plans and I applaud the architect's work here. I think it's great. I think it'll be nice once it's fine-tuned and finally built. So thank you.
Wayne?
Thank you. In the design review process, I was very conflicted with this project. And I'm appreciative that it's now at the level of the Planning Commission. And I appreciate that, that the applicant has gone through a number of different alterations and renditions with regard to this. Could you, Amber, could you bring up the slide of our, or Jim could bring up the slide of, shown it from the Del Mar, driving up Del Mar?
Yeah. I'm, I appreciate the comments from our, from the two commissioners thus far. I do. Because I think that you're trying to make something into, you're trying to improve something that is really out of scale with the street. We have to make the findings here. That's on our page, BA 8A. And I'm, it's, it's very difficult for me to make the finding of where it says, "The general appearance of the proposal is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood." I do not believe it is consistent with that. The, the other buildings there are 12 to 20 feet back. This is nine feet, nine inches at the closest point to the, to the sidewalk there. The historic building is set back 28 feet. And that's, it shows, and when you compare the two, to me, it's just not in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. Also, I'm not, I'm not able to make the finding of the proposed project will not have negative visual impact or physical impacts upon the historic structure. I think it will have a very negative impact upon this, on this particular neighborhood here. I think that it's going to dwarf the historic home. I think it's going to not only dwarf the historic home, but also dwarf the other projects down there. And I think it's going to set a precedent in that particular area. And I think that in fact, it's going to give cause for the other projects, the other buildings there to do the same. So at this point, I'm just not really able to approve this project. I think it needs to, needs to return for some significant modifications.
Bert?
We haven't really given the applicant the direction of what modifications would be acceptable, but I'm going to throw one concern that I'm, I'm getting about any of projects along this street. If we make the projects so onerous to do anything to these houses, we're not going to get anything. We have to realize we're getting something here from the applicant, improving this area. Is it perfect? No. We have to determine, is it acceptable? If he doesn't do anything, we've got the status quo, no improvements whatsoever to the neighborhood. And I want to work with the applicant to get something that's acceptable. And we worked very hard at this in design review. Actually, the best-looking building probably was the one that took the whole front. It was easier to design a Spanish colonial revival to utilizing the whole front, but to compromise, it was pulled back as far as the minor details, as far as the railings go. It's an aesthetic call. It will make it look lighter, but you will see the furniture and all on the deck. So I wouldn't use, I would approve it with either of those options. And we have to remember, this is only an application for a deck. He didn't have to do everything to this building that we requested. He offered to do that as a token to us to consider the deck. And I think we need to look at it that way. As far as pulling it back further, it's one stride of pedestrian, the change in the sightline. So I don't see that that's really helping or hurting any more than what we've got here, the historic residence. So I want to keep discussing it with everybody here, but I don't want to set a precedence that everything can come out to the street. They didn't do that. It's hollow underneath. If we want to reduce the mass of the feel, the trellis is probably more of an impact to extend the height up than anything. And that may be where we look at reducing massing versus the deck itself. So just throw that out there for discussion.
Michael?
It's an interesting discussion. First off, let me just say I applaud the applicant and the engineer for doing all of this work for a very simple thing. And I think the building can use just about anything to make it look better than it does now. It's just not a very attractive building. And so the question is, if we add to it, how can we change the character of that building so that it's, you know, it's really a home run? Is this a home run? In my mind, no, it's not. It is at wrong scale, wrong proportion. It's the wrong solution, given the fact that it's next to this historical house, given the fact that it's across from the community center. The issue is location, location, location. If this house was somewhere else, it might be acceptable. But, but given the environment that it's in, I think it needs a more elegant solution, quite frankly, and this is not it. Just take a look at that right there. You can, I mean, anybody could tell you that it's so weird and out of scale. It'd be so strange to see that be built. And I think that we'd be criticized for approving it, quite honestly. At least I criticize myself. Can we go back to the, one of the first schemes where the, the thing goes all the way across the, the front? Yeah, like there. Okay. Now, this actually looks a lot better. And I think what's happened here is this thing's been Rube Goldberg. If you all know Rube Goldberg, he starts with one thing and everybody adds something else. And by the time it gets there, it's something really weird. The other greats, the classic cartoon where a guy puts up a swing and OSHA comes up and puts in a safety belt and the architect comes in and does this. And at the end, it's this crazy thing. It's not a swing anymore. It's a crazy thing. I think, I think that's what's happened here. I think this has been victimized. I think there's been blinders put on. I think this whole idea of this 45-degree V-line has usurped the elegance that this could have. And I don't buy it. I think that that's, I think that's not a way to look at this problem at all. I think that it's putting way too much pressure on making a weird solution. This is weird. And that's much more elegant, but it's still way out in front. Now, I think it needs to be redesigned. And I think it can be redesigned and be elegant. And I think that we have to take another look at this little view corridor line because I think, I think coming out of the, off the front, all the way across, a certain amount makes this thing much stronger. Doesn't, should have come all the way out to the sidewalk. No, that's way too much. But it could start to tie this thing in, in a way that it is much more elegant. And I think if it, if that, that scheme was just pushed back, it would start to open up the corner. And maybe the trellis and some of the other stuff could be pushed over so that it's not going to be quite the impact on the historical house. But, you know, you've got the beauty of an historical house and you're going to do something really nice and you're going to put a lot of money into a house that's just as opposite as it could be. And you want to do that the best way you can. You want, you want your house to be a bookend for the, for the historical house. You don't want it to be an oddball. And this is an oddball, quite frankly. I'm sorry, but it is. And I, I think we better go back to some really good architecture here. And I think that there's a way to do this. I'm convinced there's a way to do this. And I think you're looking at a direction that makes a lot of sense. Now, I know you like your fire pit, but maybe you need to put the fire pit up on the roof deck. You got space up there to do it. And, and, and think about giving that up a little bit for your neighborhood and for your, and for your neighbor buildings. So I think it's back to the drawing boards.
All right. I think a lot of good things have been said. I, I think for what you said, Bart, my response is ditto. I, I think one thing to be concerned with, with something like this, I mean, this is hard. It's, it's a hard spot. There's, like I said at the beginning, if you read the subject, it's mixed-use zoning district and the overlays are architectural, pedestrian, central business district, and coastal zone. So we're putting, you know, that's a lot of constraints to be putting on any, on anyone. And then of course, on top of that, we've got the fact that it's sitting next to and across the street from the historic house. And the question is not just, you know, what should they do, but kind of what can we embrace? I've heard a number of people say, you know, on the commission, you know, things can be changed to be better, but I haven't heard any direction given to the applicant on, on what that can be. Not that I'm saying, not that I'm saying, you know, we should be designing from the dais, but if we say more elegant, for instance, I'm not sure myself quite what that means and we still will have to stay within the scope as much as we can of Spanish colonial. That's actually another constraint on here is trying to bring kind of a, a not too attractive Spanish building into a more Spanish colonial building, which is also a very difficult thing as we found, trying to bring those things along. Obviously, we struggled quite a bit in design review. You know, the, I think the applicant gave up a lot. Not that that by itself is, you know, sufficient for approval, but it's, it's certainly something. I'll agree with everybody, it's not a perfect solution, but I don't know that we can get to a perfect solution with this. We, I think when we look at something like this, we also have to ask, what are the alternatives? Well, one alternative is that we keep the existing structure as it is. Is that really nice? Is that something that we want to do? Another alternative is that the applicant eventually says, okay, well, I'll, I'll sell this to somebody who wants to do a mixed-use building here. So now we have mixed-use, we have somebody who wants to really push this out to the zero setback. You know, there's, there's a whole different set of issues that come into play. You know, they want retail on the bottom, et cetera, et cetera. We also made these, some of these rules after the fact. We said it's, this is mixed-use and it's a commercial district. Well, we also want people to be able to improve their homes without sort of losing their homes, without giving it up to mixed-use. So this is sort of that, the result of that. So I'm bringing all that up because I'm, I'm not sure, short of saying, sort of throwing up our hands and saying, you know, make it a mixed-use, make it a pure commercial type of building. I'm, I don't see, you know, myself, and I haven't heard the kind of specific direction that says, you know, this is what can be changed to have a better structure, a more sensitive structure, you know, and, and keep it as a, as a residential. And we might not, and like I said, with a mixed-use or a, or a commercial building, we're going to get other problems. We're going to get people really wanting and needing to push out the FAR and that sort of thing. So I look at this and I say, okay, the, you know, the driveways are open. I actually think, if you could bring up the current proposal, Jim, would you mind? I actually think some things to consider is, is we want to activate the pedestrian environment in this area. That's one of our findings. The fact that there's a clear pedestrian entrance there that's inviting near the street is one of the, I think, one of the aspects that, that, that activate that pedestrian environment. They, it says it's a pedestrian environment. The fact that people are up on a deck right next to the street, much like we have with restaurants and people eating outside the restaurant, that too is a signal and, you know, it, it's a welcoming, more, more welcoming pedestrian environment. So those are actually contributions to that pedestrian environment that's being made here. I think, and I always appreciate what Larry has to say with these, and I always take it to heart. I don't think Larry's going to like what I have to say today, unfortunately, but I actually think as a whole, the building probably, the changes probably complement the historic building more than the current building does because of the, you know, the attractiveness, the more, the more Spanish colonial revival sense of it and the fact that like we do with many buildings next to historic buildings, we've moved whatever massing there is, we've moved it to the opposite side of the lot. So, which is a common thing that we do. So all told, I'm actually in support of this project. I think I could live with a number of the, the changes that people have suggested. I think the lighting's probably not a bad idea. For instance, I don't see any reason to cut off the corner. I don't think that really buys us much and, and the applicant has already given up a lot. Gets to the point where one foot here and one foot there starts to make a lot of difference. But I, for those reasons, I'm, I'm in support of the project, but I'm, I know other people have had more comments, so I'm anxious to hear those as well. So Wayne, I think you had comments?
Well, you've asked for some suggestions and the suggestion I would have is that this particular design right here is to get rid of the trellis, move it back from the sidewalk significantly, and get rid of that archway to the right. And that's, and that to me would be a lot more acceptable than what we have right now. Those are my suggestions.
And Michael?
Yeah. So again, we're, we're dealing with users, the users' needs. Okay? So the applicant has certain needs and there's intent for the space and that intent requires a certain size. Otherwise, we start to detract and take that from, from the intent of the, of the space. We make it smaller. Some of the things that the applicant wanted to do may not be possible there. Maybe we relocate to the top. Maybe the fire pit could work the top. I don't know. But let's look at what we have face value. So what we're trying to do here is, again, appreciated that the applicant is addressing the primary structure, but we're trying to work with the, the character of that, the lines of that, of that structure. So what could we really do? I mean, there are architects on this dais now and I'm sure if you really put pen to paper, you could probably come up with a number of different designs, but this is the design we have. And does it work? I think it does. I think it, it sort of lends to, it lends to what's, what's existing. Even in its enhanced state, it lends to it. It works together. It's harmonious. Can the scale be any different? Certainly. But again, we start to detract from the intended use of the space. Could it be minimized to reduce what obviously is, is, you know, we see it as a potential impact to the visual character of the streetscape? So could we ask for details to be added or removed that would help us not see it as such of an impact? I think so. I think moving those, those pony walls, removing and, and adding the, you know, the wrought iron, you know, all the way down to the, to the floor would do that. It would help, certainly on the front. We can send them back to the drawing board and I'd be okay with that, but I don't know that we're going to see anything a whole lot different. I just, I just don't see it happening here without redesigning the entire building. That's my thought.
Michael?
I, I thought I was pretty clear on how it could be redesigned. I'm not sure I need to go over that again, but I think I was clear on how it could be done. I think it can be done simply and elegantly. And... can be done simply and elegantly. And I don't think we should settle for second best. I don't think the owner should either. I mean, this is your pride and joy here. You could make this thing look a lot better. And, and I think, I think it needs another pass. I think it can be better. And then I could support it.
Zen?
When I make that suggestion to, for this corner to clear the modified sightline, I didn't mean literally to cut that corner diagonally. Of course, the, a simpler way to look at it is just to move the front backward by about two and a half feet or maybe three feet. So I think that will address lots of concerns from me and from, from other commissioners. If we want a solution today, and I guess that's a, a possible modification, I'm not sure if the applicant is willing to accept that. So maybe we should ask the applicant to that. Because for me, it's, if we, if we had that sightline analysis and used that as a justification of the current design, then the modified sightline makes more sense. And the original one is, the idea is great, but it's, it's a flaw. So we need to correct that today. That's my comment.
Bart?
This is a question for both Wayne and Mr. Wu, and the applicant. Right now, the deck is 11 foot three deep usable area. If that were brought down to nine six, giving us a little over two, two feet back, would that alleviate any of your concerns? It would certainly, I think, change the diagonal concern. It would bring it back from the street an additional two foot something. And then address architectural details that Michael had on the building. Would that satisfy a couple of commissioners?
Well, you know, scaling it back even farther would, would be preferable. But I think, you had mentioned before, Bart, that the trellis is really an imposing architectural feature there, to say the least. I'd like to see it scaled back as much as possible. But I, I, just taking a look at this, I don't know what that arch is doing there. This is not going to be a commercial project down the road. This is a residential project, and I don't think we should confuse the two. But the archway, I don't, I don't know what that, what that means. It, it doesn't, doesn't go with the rest of the project there. It looks weird to me. But scaling it back, it looks bulky. It looks, it just looks too big for, you know, for the streetscape there. And so I'd like to see it moved back as much as possible. I, I can't visualize what two feet is at this point, but you know, but I, I think it needs to be moved back as much as it possibly can be and get rid of that archway. The archway to me is, is a, is a real humdinger for me.
If I may. Okay, so the archway is more of a byproduct of the, the deck. So the upper outdoor space needs to be supported. And so there has to be a relationship here architecturally. There needs to be continuity with the lines. And I agree with you. With the removal of that lighting element, no longer need to really make that a focal point. So those arches could, that arch could be redesigned so that it follows the, the, the arch line of the other arches. So there's a little more flow, continuity in the, and I think either way, you're going to have an opening there. It's an opening or a solid wall.
True, true.
So you might as well.
No, that's fine.
Yeah. And I, and I just, I want to put this out there. Yeah, even the applicant said, this is the, this, this road, Del Mar, it's the crown jewel of the city. We shouldn't, you know, we're talking about, well, it's better than what was there. And, and it's, yeah, that's fine. But, you know, we should want excellence. Really, there's no reason why. But we also need to be reasonable. You know, we, again, the proposal started with, with a, a request to review a, a plan for a deck. And the entire, it looks like the entire building is being addressed here. And I think overall, it's going to be nice. It's going to be very nice. If we can make some minor improvements, it could really work.
Can I, yeah, I, I'm starting to hear a trend. And some of the things that have been said is to work with the applicant to redesign the, the architectural elements, push the, push it back, you know, several feet. One of the things that I'm noticing from the, from this is there's a lot of different things going on, which is getting to Michael Smith's point about the elegance of it. You have a component that sticks out. You have a component here. You have an entry component, and then you have another component here. So on each side, you have different things going on. I think it just needs to be simplified to create, you know, when, when Michael was talking about the front one, the nice thing about the original one was it was quite consistent and pretty simple, you know? So maybe we take that kind of concept back, back to this, right here. So I think we have enough to go on. We can, if the applicant's willing to go at it one more time, that we can sit down and work with him on it and come up with something a little bit more simple that is more consistent with what we want to see on Del Mar. It's a tough, but getting back to also Mr. Ruland's comment, it's a tough situation because it's creating a deck, it's basically resting on pillars, which isn't really a Spanish colonial element. It's tough to do with the mass and everything to make it look right. But I think we can work with the applicant to come up with an alternative design on this.
Okay.
Would it come back to design review or come back to planning commission?
We could probably send it either way, Jim. Can we continue it and send it to design review? But I, I don't want them to go through.
Yeah, I just don't want to put the applicant in.
Do you like to speak?
Okay.
Sure. Yes, please.
So, you know, I think Mr. Petchus couldn't agree that we've been, you know, really working with the guys and trying to come up with this thing. And I agree with you, you know, so many chefs in the kitchen and what we end up with is, you know, doesn't look elegant and, and, and it is a compromise. And I don't think we can get to excellent. We're looking for acceptable. And we're, I'm game, get rid of the trellis. I'm game, I'm game, and I'm from day one. I'm game to do anything. And I just want someone to put in front of me what will get approved. And, you know, I love Mr. Smith's idea of, let's go across and make it look elegant. But it'll please him, but then the, the historical person, the person who's really worried about that historical asset will say, no, I can't approve that. And so this is, we've been working with the, the committee, and there are all of these overlays and concerns and considerations. And, you know, I don't know, we've redone this from scratch six times. I don't know that there are any other solutions that are going to appear. You know, I have one here that goes two-thirds across the driveway and is very simple. We have that one, which has that odd element that sticks out because my kitchen window is there, and we can't just go one driveway because I'd have to remodel my whole kitchen to move that window for this lineup with the wall, to have our pony wall go into there. We had it originally with all wrought iron to keep it open and light. But then someone said, well, the pedestrians aren't going to want to see your dining table. So we put the pony walls in. We had small sconces along the way. And they said, well, it's a pedestrian thing, so make a pedestrian, you know, highlight it and make it like an element. And like, we've gone through so many iterations. And, and it's, it's, it's difficult to get a group of people, all with different valid concerns, to agree on something and then all be reasonably comfortable with the solution. And so I, I, I just really want outdoor space. I love the city. I love this, the, the street. I, I want to make it right. And I'm completely flexible. I'm already, you know, 17 grand in on this. I mean, I am committed to work with you guys to come up with something. Please, just give me, if you can give me more guidance, if there's something else we can do. Elegance is not, is, is hard to translate into actual something that will get approved. And I agree. I would love it to be simple.
Simple.
Simple, right? Like this one here, I think, if you want to pass that through, this is where we were last November, this was, no, this doesn't abide by the line of sight, but it's simpler. Okay?
It's simpler, but.
So Jim, your recommendation would be to maybe go sit down, maybe with staff, sit down with the applicant. I think you've got, you said you've got some information here, simpler, more elegant. You've got a sense of how we, how the commission feels about the setback and that sort of thing. Do you think at that point, if you brought that back to planning, that it's something that, that would be the most appropriate thing? Because I, we can go to design review, but I, I'm, I just want to make sure we reduce the steps for the applicant.
You know, I, I want to recognize how hard the applicant's worked with us to try and come up with a design. And so I'd like to just, you know, work with him and his architect or his designer to come up with a, a solution. I like that right there. As, you know, like Wayne just said, that but smaller, I think that would work. So let's just kind of go with that. I think that's the idea.
So, so if we continue this to our next meeting, for instance? Is that a, or do you need more time?
Not the next meeting.
No.
Okay. So then our, our second meeting in June?
Yeah.
I think it's when it's ready.
May I make a, may I make a suggestion?
Yes.
I can make a, a motion to have a six-door vote. Say, if we push the front back by three feet, see how many commissioners are willing to support it. And maybe that will get the applicant what he needs today.
No.
I don't know what that means.
That's, that's a wrong.
It sounds like, you know, staff and the applicant have some sense of what we're talking about, so.
We can do better than that.
And the, and the other big thing is, I did mention the fire pit. I think I diverted the conversation, though. The, the reason the columns have to be out where they are is so when you pull a vehicle into the driveway, I've got three kids, to get them out of the back doors of my SUV, those columns cannot come in three feet because they'll be directly in front of the doors. And so that means I've got to stop crossing the sidewalk and unload. So it's, the fire pit is, yeah, it would be nice. I could do that on the roof. But it's more the, where those columns that support the deck have to be to let, allow unloading.
It's, it's a good point. I, you, just maybe as an off-the-cuff suggestion is, future renderings, you may actually want to show a car there so that we can see that. That might be helpful.
Sure. That's a great idea.
To give people an idea, what I think would be an easy, simple solution is, you take what he gave us. See, and I'm cutting off this part right here, which is kind of the oddball part. What if you just kind of got rid of this column here and stretched it across and made it very simple?
One big, yeah.
And then that's more consistent with this opening. So you have three sides that are all the same.
I think, as I recall in design review, the issue we had with it was because it wasn't, it didn't conform to SCR, but maybe, maybe making some exceptions would have a cascade of good results.
I think that you have a unique situation here that you're not going to get, I mean, to get true Spanish colonial revival, you need to start from a scratch. And so we're, but it's, it's more closely resembling what we had originally over here.
I think, Jim, one problem we had, we tried that, but it didn't give them access from that front deck to the side deck. If that section goes away.
Oh, you're saying the section goes away?
We're just talking about this column, right?
Just the column.
Just the column.
So you give it to the, you give it to the arch that, that.
Okay, okay. That'll work. That would work.
That would be a lot.
Yeah, that would be awesome. So, so maybe we should, if the, you know, it sounds like if someone wants to make a, a motion to continue it, to date uncertain, probably.
Do you want to put it to the second meeting, not this first meeting?
No, it's got to.
What?
It needs time to get right. That's what it means.
They, they've been working on this, what, a year?
Yeah, over a year.
We can't keep putting them off and off and off.
I'll get, we'll get right on this. We'll iterate. We'll come in as often as we need to come back for the first meeting in June. I would love that.
Well, I think it's probably the second.
Oh, okay.
We got to make sure, although it is a continuance. Date uncertain? To be best?
Let's just go to the second meeting in June, just to be, give us time.
I move that we continue the.
The second meeting would work. Okay, fine. June 22nd, that would work for, for me. And that will be enough time.
Okay. I move we continue the Minor Cultural Heritage Permit Application 15055, Sir Remodel, to the second meeting in June.
Which date is?
June 22nd. Is there a second?
Yes, sir.
Motion by Bart, second by Michael. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Okay. We are, pardon me. All right, let's take a brief break. What time do we have? We will take a break until five of eight. Right?
Proposing restriping of Avenue de Pico between the courtyards and the eastern end. And Mr. Frank, if you want to get us going.
Good evening Chair. My name is Tom Frank. I'm the Engineering Transportation Manager for the city. And I'm here tonight to present the item of restriping Avenue de Pico. So there's a pretty in-depth staff report in front of you, but what I really wanted to emphasize is every time that we resurface our collector and arterial roadways within our city, we try and implement the general plan. And most importantly, we try and do this in the most cost-effective manner possible. So besides what I put in the, at the agenda report as a short presentation, which I wanted to give to you, just to give you a little bit more in-depth understanding of what we go through when we're reevaluating how to restripe a roadway, if that's a consideration. So first off, just the, the brief overview of the segment, the road segment which we're talking about tonight. It's Avenue de Pico between the courtyards signal or intersection to the, the eastern end. And that roadway was redeveloped during the development of Talega and it was redeveloped to its current configuration of a six lane arterial. And that was to, in preparation of, at that time, the, the planning for the forthcoming 241, the toll road. In addition, there's also the future planning area number eight, which is envisioned would tie into Avenue de Pico, which would also increase traffic counts along that road segment. Those projects are, we don't have those on the foreseeable future schedule. We have no idea when they're going to be coming forward. So for the city, what that essentially has been is a really, for the last 20 years, is an overdeveloped roadway. And it's really expensive for the city to maintain its, its pavement infrastructure. And it's, engineering's task to try and maintain that pavement infrastructure in the most cost-effective manner possible. So for the city to continue to maintain that six lane roadway when it's not necessary, that's taxpayers' funds that could be used for other roadways that really need to be maintained and resurfaced. So that's kind of the brief history of, of that road segment. We did, of course, with all of our CIP projects where we're going to be making significant changes that may be noticeable or will be noticeable to public. We do, do want to extend out public notice, so we approached the Talega HOA and they agreed to help us notice the project. So they distributed the, the draft agenda report to their constituents list and to their sub HOAs. And so I've received about six responses. You've probably received more than that. About four of them were opposed to the proposed restriping in our recommended configuration and several were in support of the project. So with that, I'll just give you a brief overview of all the issues we look into when we're considering a restriping of roadway. First is, of course, we want to do everything in conformance with our general plan. And just to highlight a few items or policies in the general plan, we want to retrofit existing facilities to improve the balance for all users of the roadway. Be maintained in accordance with the best practices and city's street improvement program. And what that's referring to is again, doing, doing the work in the most cost-effective manner for the city. How do we maintain that pavement infrastructure in the cost, most cost-effective manner? Innovative design. Can we improve the balance of the roadway and its compatibility with the surrounding land use? And then a street redesign. We seek opportunities to redesign the streets so that they're compatible with the surrounding neighborhood context and the community vision of the future. So the big picture on street design is, one of the big picture items is, you know, how do you balance the right of way to serve all the users? And especially on this roadway, 99% of the users are vehicles. So that's by far the, the biggest weighted thing that I need to look at. So then you ask, well, what's the appropriate lane width for the vehicles? And what, what's, how many lanes are needed to provide the appropriate level of service for that roadway? So just a little background or understanding on, on what's appropriate or good designs as far as lane widths go. We take our guidance through many different manuals, guidance manuals. Several I've listed up here, these preliminary ones that we, we use. The Design Manual Living Streets, Ashto and Caltrans Highway Design Manual. And their recommended lane widths are shown in front of you for residential streets. They really vary from nine feet to 12 feet. Residential streets, you're typically looking at nine foot vehicular travel lanes to 10 feet. Collectors and arterials from 10 to 11 feet. And that's for collectors and arterials serving 30 mile an hour to 45 mile an hour arterials. And then interstates or autobonds or expressways where you really want people moving fast, they design them for 70 miles an hour plus. You're talking about 11 foot travel lanes to 13 foot travel lanes. To give you some context, you know, where this is around town, Avenue de Pico has travel lanes ranging from what we're talking about tonight, in excess of 13 feet, all the way down to 10 feet in width at, near the interstate where you have those four lanes approaching the interstate. Those are 10 foot travel lanes. We don't have side collisions and we don't have accident statistics showing that those 10 foot travel lanes are a problem. In addition, Los Maras, which we resurfaced several years ago, we, we restripped Los Maras and those are 10 to 10 and a half foot travel lanes on inbound side or going east, eastbound travel lanes. And we haven't seen any increase in, in collisions on that street. So, and there's been study after study after study that actually tries to pinpoint the perfect lane width for different speeds. And from what I've seen, if you're looking at city arterials, you're looking at a V curve of all the data that shows that anywhere between 10 to 11 feet is kind of your premium sweet spot for safety on street lane widths. So that's what we're looking at here. This is an arterial. We want to go on the wider side of that range considering that there's trucks and there's, well, there used to be bus service along there, but, or it still is, but that's, looks like it's maybe going away. But considering that, that is a primary truck route to the business parks and commercial areas, we're recommending the 11 foot travel lane for that, that roadway. Couple of examples of some of the streets that have been.
While you were on that, could you go back to that slide?
Sure, yeah.
That 11 foot lane width for I-5, that's during construction?
Oh yeah, sorry. I kind of grazed over that. Yeah, that's true. That is for construction. So the 11 foot travel lane width is for construction. So that's been in place for, for several years along there, or will be in place for several years on I-5. Yeah, their typical lane width for I-5 is 12 feet. So we've, as I mentioned, we've resurfaced or now we're, we're, this is the, I guess, the practice which we're doing for all of our resurfacing projects. So I just put up several examples of some recent projects which we've done. Over the last three years, we've resurfaced and improved the bike lanes and narrowed the travel lanes on over 24 miles of roadway. And so here's just a sampling of some of the collector and arterials which we've done. This is the most recent significant one, and this is Avenue de La Pata, where the picture on the left is the before and you could see the excessively wide travel lanes, especially on the one on the right-hand side, and that's 13 to 14 feet. That's, that's wider than I-5 travel lanes. And then we, we restripped it with 11 foot travel lanes. That's what's shown on the picture to the right. And with that extra space, we, we put in the buffer. And again, the real emphasis here is, is, well, it's really twofold. One is we're implementing the general plan and complete streets where we can. But especially on arterials, we're talking about how do we cost-effectively maintain our pavement infrastructure? Here's the, the other example I mentioned, Camino de los Maras, again excessively wide travel lanes, which could promote speeding, then rebalanced and restripped to the after configuration, which is 10 and 10 foot traveling on the outside next to the buffer and 10 and a half foot on the inside, adjacent to the median and stripe median. Camino Vera Cruz, where we implemented bike lanes. Just narrowed the travel lanes to 10 foot travel lanes and implemented the bike lanes. And then lastly, Avenue de Veracaro, where we reconfigured that roadway and implemented buffered bike lanes. So some of the comments we've heard about people objecting is, is that they're concerned about public safety, obviously. Is it safer? Is it less safe? We heard comments that, well, it just, it's common sense that wider would mean safer. And I think that's what the traffic engineers thought, you know, for years, from like World War II up until like 20 years ago, that wider must mean safer. And so let's widen it, widen it, widen it. And what happened was the unintended consequences is you have really fast roadways. They use that same concepts when they were developing a lot of the subdivisions, some in this town. And I could tell you the problems, the biggest call or the most frequent calls we get is speeding. And I can always tell if somebody's calling about speeding, it's going to be on a residential street that was developed during this era when they thought 12 foot travel lanes were acceptable. And sure enough, that's what always happens. It's on the 40 foot curb to curb lane widths where we have those calls. And the, and the older parts of town, when you have the narrower residential streets, anywhere between like 30 foot or so, 30, 32, we don't get the speeding problems that you get on the wider streets. So it's, it's pretty intuitive when you think about it. When I'm on I-5 or on the autobahn, I want to go fast, you know, I want a Ferrari and I want to move. But when I'm on a windy, narrow road and there's parked cars and there's a lot of friction, you want to go slow. You don't feel safe going fast. So that's kind of the concept behind it. Now, there's been tons and tons of studies that show the data and, and you know, what the right lane widths are for the different arterials. So another, another concern that came up was, well, what about La Pata? La Pata is going to be opening. It's going to bring more traffic. And so I, I, of course, before we suggested this, we looked at the forecast and what's the appropriate lane widths and number of lanes for that segment. And with the opening of La Pata, there is going to be a significant increase in ADTs or volumes of cars accessing La Pata. But the main bulk of that is going to be on Avenue de Vista Hermosa and Avenue de Pico. And the, the forecast increases towards the east. There's really no source or there's no change in that area. So there's not really going to be a dramatic increase in traffic due to the opening of La Pata. Cause there's no change in, in the land use or nothing that's going to change the chip generation for that area. So I just wanted to highlight that point. And then I just wanted to touch upon, you know, again, our primary focus. This is one of my, this is one of my pinnacle responsibilities for the city is how do I maintain the street infrastructure in the most cost-effective manner possible? Like a real brief history, back in the early 90s, the roads were in terrible shape. They're behind the average for statewide average, which is terrible, 66. And let me, let me try and explain the slide a little bit. This scale is based on a PCI index, and that's called a pavement condition index. And so it's pretty simple. One is completely failed, like a mud road. And then 100 will be like a newly built road with a perfect asphalt surface. So then you get your range in between there and you could see just the sliding scale. They're excellent, good, you know, down to failed. And so in 1989, the roads were down in the low 50s. And I remember driving through San Clemente and noting that the roads looked terrible. And they were so bad that the citizens actually chose to assess themselves. And for the next 25 years, the roads went from the low 50s up to the mid 80s. And even over the last couple of years, even though that assessment district has, has terminated or ended, the PCI still have been creeping up for a couple of reasons. But with that assessment district ending, the city has a million dollars less per year to maintain its pavement infrastructure. And again, my primary responsibility is how do I keep the roads in a really good condition and, and spend the appropriate amount of money on each street so that we can spread that money to where it's needed? And we still have, even with that, roads really have a 20-year life cycle. So it's not like we overlay it and we can walk away for 50 years. We always have to plan ahead. And, and we do slurry seals that, that pretty much can get you by for the next seven to 10 years. But over a couple of cycles, then you probably are going to have to do an overlay to address the, the elevation and differential issues. are going to have to do an overlay to address the elevation and differential issues. So, in your agenda report and in rather small print on the screen, I just put up the slide that shows our proposed striping. And between the courtyards and Avenue de Vista Hermosa, we're essentially proposing to narrow the travel lanes. Keep the same number of travel lanes up to Avenue de Vista Hermosa, because even though it's really not needed from the LOS and purely traffic standpoint, we know that people, you know, like convenience, they're used to it. We didn't want to make any dramatic changes to the level of service or for the bulk of traffic accessing Toledo. However, from Avenue de Vista Hermosa till the end, that has relatively light traffic load on it, like 8,000 ADT, which is close to the equivalent of Presidio, which goes up the hill to City Hall here. So, that's relatively low traffic volume, ADTs. And as you can see, Presidio is carrying about 8,000 ADT, and that's a one-lane roadway. And many, one-lane roadways carry ADTs, which is average daily trips or volume of in excess of 16,000 to 20,000 vehicles a day. So, I feel that we're being still very, I guess, lax, or we're not even tightening the belt. Like, if I was purely focused on providing the most cost-effective solution possible, I'd seriously consider putting just one lane in each direction and putting striped medians on two travel lanes out there. I know that would probably really disturb some residents out in that area, and we didn't want to go to that extreme, but we felt it was wasteful not to consider putting a striped median in the outside lane, so we went to a two-lane configuration from Avenue de Vista Hermosa till the end. So, that was the thought and the rationale behind it. And we do recognize that with every change, there's going to be people that are first concerned, and they should be, and then second, everybody has their own opinion, so we fully get that, and that's part of the D process, and we appreciate that. So, I always appreciate all the comments we get many times, and one that I forwarded to you, well, I forwarded all the comments that I received to you, but one which I responded to you, because I was interested in the comment, was one of the residents' comments was, well, I don't think aesthetically will look as nice as the current condition. So, I asked them, well, what do you mean by that? I want to understand your point, or what do you think will look better aesthetically in having a six-lane roadway versus a striped four-lane roadway? And they said, well, I don't like when a city or an agency grinds the striping and then puts a stripe in a new spot. And so, I replied that, well, we are going to be grinding the striping, but we're going to be resurfacing the whole roadway and then putting down new stripes. So, I think that, I'm not sure if that fully addressed their issue, but he asked a few other questions, and he seemed like at least he was satisfied that I was responding to him. I'm not, I can't say whether he thinks it's still better aesthetically, but we're not, I guess my point is, we're not going to grind the stripes and leave it as is. It is going to be a new, a resurfaced roadway, and essentially, it's going to look like Avenue de La Pata, except for a much wider median, a striped median or buffer area. It's going to be 14 feet, which is pretty wide. So, that's the logic behind it. I know that, you know, that everybody has their own opinion, but that's pretty much my presentation for tonight, and I, you have my recommendation.
Okay. Thank you. And Michael, did you have a question?
Yes, I do, Tom. Okay. Well, I'd like to note that I spoke with two residents in the area of the project, Mr. Jason Ull and a Mr. William Strand with opposing views. One had a concern over premature wear and eventual uneven surfaces created by narrowing the lanes. So, it's more of a focused aisle, if you will, and so you'd have most vehicles using the same path, potentially creating an uneven surface and a degraded driving experience ultimately. And the other in support of the project, supported the broader user base potential for bicyclists and pedestrians, and I thought that was also valid and important as it relates to the general plan, right? So, Tom, can you, can you address the premature wear and degradation concern that a resident had, and how, if it happened, could it happen, and if it did, what would we do about it?
Well, I don't, I don't see that the rutting would happen. It could happen, I guess. I've seen rutting in roadways when there's structural problems. But even though we put striping on a roadway, cars don't, you know, adhere to that striping at all times. In fact, as you've heard me say before, many drivers don't pay attention to signs or striping. But what we're doing by narrowing these lanes to 11-foot travel lanes, we're essentially pushing them, and a majority of the drivers won't be driving into that striped median. So, we're pushing them over towards the center of the roadway. Although we put 10-foot travel lanes, it doesn't mean that somebody's going to be driving with two feet on each side of the car, driving in a straight line. People still veer back and forth. They still change lanes. So, I don't think, I've never seen a 10-foot travel lane. Like, we have them on Avenue de Pico, we have them on Los Maras, and we haven't experienced that. When you do see rutting, it tends to be like at an intersection where you have heavy truck routes, and they are lining up at the intersection, and it's a failing structural section. I don't think it has to do with the lane width.
Okay.
So, that's addressing that point. And then, also, one thing I didn't point out was the magnitude of costs that we're talking about here. And so, if we were overlaying, so we look at pavements in a 20-year life cycle, and in this project, we're going to be slurry sealing this road segment, which is essentially a 10-year life cycle. But when looking at a 20-year life cycle, with doing this alternative, we're looking at a cost savings of anywhere between 15% to 30%. And if you just look at the cost savings per year for doing this alternative, it's about 17, for this one small road segment, or I shouldn't say small, it's significant length of roadway, but it's $17,000 per year, which I think equates to like $360,000 over a 20-year life cycle. So, it's a significant amount of money. And when you talk about all of the resurfacing which we do per year, which is anywhere between $3 to $4 million, it's, you're talking about big money. So, that's why we're really bringing it forward. So, sorry, I just want to jump in there, because I know the cost is an important issue.
It is, it is.
And then, did you have another question regarding the-
I do. I have a sub-question to this first group, and then I've got two more quick questions. So, back to the uneven, premature, potential premature wear. So, if that was to occur, I think it's reasonable to expect that we would be out addressing it, because-
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, right away. It becomes a potential safety issue.
Correct. And as I said, this is a seal project, so we're expecting a life expectancy of about 10 years. So, in 10 years or less, we will be evaluating it and will likely be evaluating it for a resurfacing project at that point. And the cost magnitude with today's current dollars is about $2 million for that road segment.
That's amazing.
Yeah.
Okay. So, can we talk about a redesign plan if a major road connection was to occur at some point? And how's that going to look?
It'll look very close to the section that is Detail A. So, we'll basically reestablish, we'll take that 14-foot buffer and establish a new travel lane, an 11-foot travel lane, and we'll have a three-foot buffer out there. So, that's what my recommendation would be, to reestablish that travel lane.
So, we'd be returning to something close to what we had before to accommodate the new trips?
Very close.
Okay.
Right.
That's great. And can we talk about the traffic speeds and noise? And once the project is implemented, what are we going to experience?
Well, theoretically, the narrower travel lanes are supposed to have a slight impact on travel speeds. Supposed to, many studies say it drops it a couple of miles per hour for 45, 50 mile an hour roadway. We, I can't say that for certain. I, you know, it depends on driver characteristics. I, we haven't seen much of a drop on Los Maras, let's just put it that way. There were some other things that we did that may have actually increased the speed. We took out a major kink in the roadway, and the downside to that is the cars actually didn't slow down. But we haven't seen a dramatic impact on the speed of vehicles. As far as the noise issue, there shouldn't be any change in the noise issue.
Okay. And my final question is, daily trips now versus original projections during the design phase?
Daily, do we project it or-
Projected.
Well, the projected are greatly dependent upon what happens with Planning Area Number Eight and any potential toll road in the future. But I can tell you, the toll road, just knowing the permitting that's involved and decisions is, I won't be around, I'll be dead before that goes in. So, that's at least 20, or hopefully 20 years. Hopefully, I last a slurry seal lifetime. And then, Planning Area Number Eight, that's, I think that's a ways out as well.
Okay. Thank you, Tom.
Okay. Zen?
Yes, Tom. You talk about the cost of saving in that 20-year life cycle, and about $17,000 per year and $360,000 in the life cycle. What is the cost in that same life cycle?
What is the cost? We base that on the cost for resurfacing for that 20-year life cycle, and that's $3 a square foot.
How much does it cost for the restriping?
Oh, we would revisit restriping. Let's say like if the traffic ADTs were increased due to development or tying in with the toll road, it really wouldn't cost anything, because we would look at it as a part of the road maintenance program. So, we'd either, we'd either reseal it, like if we projected that there was going to, if all of a sudden we hear Planning Area Number Eight was going to come online and we're going to get an increased traffic load on Avenue de Pico, we would schedule, we would know that within 10 years when we resurface or re-slurry seal that roadway, that we'd have to plan for that third travel lane. So, there'd be no increase in cost? Did I answer your question?
Sort of.
Are you talking about returning the lane?
Sure, sure. This will be in the CIP program.
Right.
What's the price tag of this project?
Oh, this project, oh, excuse me. This project is about a half million dollars.
A half million dollars?
Correct.
And how many times do, how often do we need to do it in that 20-year life cycle?
Well, if we evaluate it in 10 years from now, we believe this will be a 10-year life cycle. So, that's the advantage of slurry sealing. You could see a half million is a quarter of 2 million. So, if in 10 years, it's still holding up well, and there's not serious rutting or settling or cracking, we could possibly do another slurry seal, which is another, during today's dollars, about a half million dollars. If it's at the point where the road structural section, the ride, all the indicators showing that we should resurface it, then we jump up to the next level, which is the $2 million level.
So, you're saying conservatively, within the next 20 years, we're going to spend $1 million on it for the cost of saving of $360,000?
Yeah. All right. Can you run that one by me one more time? I'm not sure if I follow your logic.
You said the cost of saving-
Correct.
In that 20-year life cycle is estimated to be $360,000.
Correct. That was assuming for the asphalt overlay-
Right.
Life cycle.
In order to get that cost of saving, we're doing this project, which will cost us in the same life cycle, $1 million. Is that true?
Correct. Yes.
So, so where is the saving? We spend more money than what we save.
No, I'm not following that.
If we were to do this project, we would spend $1 million in the next 20 years. At the same time, you will save the maintenance cost at $360,000.
So, the project, if we wanted to bring this project up to a new overlay standard, the project cost would be $2 million. That would be the project cost if we were going to bring this project up to a 100-level PCI, a brand-new roadway, brand-new overlay. So, then you begin your life cycle. When you do a slurry seal project, you're not bringing the roadway up to a brand-new level. You're sealing it to extend the life cycle. So, it's comparing, it's not comparing apples to apples.
So, you're saying that our choice is either do the slurry seal now, or in a few years, do the $2 million?
Or you could do the $2 million now. That's what I'm saying. But we're saying that it's more cost-effective to do the slurry seal now and then extend the pavement life an extra 10 years.
And put off the $2 million cost as long as possible.
Correct. Right. Exactly. So, the cost savings, which I was implying or explaining, is based on a 20-year life cycle for pavement overlay costs, which are about $3 a square foot. And most of the cost when you're dealing with road maintenance has to do with the travel lanes, the vehicular travel lane area. So, I hope that answered your question.
Not really.
No?
My question was, in order to have that cost of saving on the maintenance, how much money does the city needs to put in? What is the investment? We understand the return now.
Right.
The return is $17,000 per year. What is the cost to get that saving?
The cost to get that savings would be the $2 million.
Well, I think you're really asking what the slurry seal's going to cost.
The slurry seal is a half million dollars.
Right. So, where's the saving?
So, there's no saving. We cost more money.
I'm not following the logic.
No, that $17,000 a year is saved by doing the slurry seal instead of the whole new roadway, right? $17,000 a year. The cost is whatever was a half a million dollars, right? If we do the slurry seal, and the reason we're saving, correct me if I'm wrong, the reason we're saving $17,000 a year is because we're not paying for a whole new roadway. We're putting that off.
Well, I think, I think my estimated cost savings may be confusing, so let me back up. When I was trying, the most, when you maintain a roadway, the most expensive portion to maintain are the vehicular travel lanes. That's the areas that break down. If you have a striped median, those don't, they structurally don't break down. Bike lanes typically don't break down nearly as fast. They break down at about a quarter or 25% rate of the vehicular travel lanes. So, about 75% of the cost are going towards maintaining those vehicular travel lanes. So, I based my cost savings on a, the 20-year life cycle of that road pavement being overlaid with a $2 million overlay, because over the period of these 20-year life cycles, we're going to be overlaying it. I guess what I didn't factor into was occasionally, or maybe on increments of like every other life cycle period, we could put in a 10-year slurry seal, and that would reduce that cost. So, maybe that cost savings might be, well, actually, I was very conservative with it, so it's probably still fairly accurate to being about $375,000 a year, but you'd have to be looking at it from a $2 million for a 20-year period cost.
Right. The $2 million will be spent anyway, whether we restriped them or not. Is that true?
I think that's true, because you're only maintaining-
Two travel lanes.
Yeah.
Four travel lanes versus six.
Versus maintaining six lanes.
That's correct.
So, you're saving two sixths.
That's right. That's where the cost savings is. It's over, so from this point on, if you have four travel lanes versus six travel lanes, you're maintaining those, that's basically a third less travel lane, so it's much less expensive.
Well, I understand that from the beginning. My question was, how much does it cost to make that change?
Yeah, that's the question. I mean-
How much does it cost? So, it costs a little bit more in paint to make that change. It costs a fraction, like five, maybe, from a slur, if we're slur sealing this roadway from a six-lane roadway to what we're doing today, a four-lane roadway, we're probably talking about $5,000 or maybe $10,000 more in paint.
Okay. Well, that makes perfect sense.
Oh, sorry for not understanding your question.
But the cost of actually doing this, you said, is around $500,000.
That's correct.
And we're saving, so your question was, okay, it's going to cost $500,000 to do this, but we're only going to be saving $360,000. Is that your-
Right. But that's over a 20-year life cycle, though.
That's, you're saying a 20-year cycle, that we're, by doing the slurry seal, we're saving 300-something odd thousand dollars versus putting down a brand-new roadway. Is that, is that correct?
No. No. That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that over a life cycle of the roadway, like if we had a brand-new roadway and every 20 years we're resurfacing it, that by doing a four-lane configuration instead of a six-lane configuration, you'd be saving on average about $360,000 per 20-year life cycle.
And that's independent of the slurry seal?
Correct.
Ah, okay.
That's what I was saying.
But the slurry seal extends the roadway for a half a million dollars for 10 years.
Right.
A new roadway, you get 20 years. That's a good deal, then. You're getting 10 years of use-
For a quarter of the cost.
For a quarter of the cost.
Right. But that's, I think maybe that, at least for me, might have been a point of confusion, because there's two, there's two dimensions here.
Correct, yeah.
One is the slurry seal versus a new roadway. The other one is-
Right.
-two lanes versus three lanes.
So, I apologize for the confusion. So, I'll just say that it's a good point. It's more cost-effective to do the slurry seal, regardless of whether it's a slurry seal or a, an overlay. It's anywhere between a- slurry seal or a, an overlay. It's, it's anywhere between, I use a big, broad range, anywhere between, uh, 10 to 30% less expensive to maintain a four-lane roadway than it is a six-lane roadway.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you very much for clarifying that.
And, uh, Michael, did you have a question?
Yeah, this is, uh, pretty basic. Um, can you start at the top of the three roadways and tell me the difference between what we have now and what you're proposing?
Yeah, sure. I actually have a slide for that. Um, but sorry, it's so small. So I'll have to just walk you through these. So, up, here it is. So the attachment B on the left is something you don't have in your agenda packet, but I figured you might ask this. Now, it's different. What you have, I think, in your agenda packet is attachment B, which shows the proposed configuration.
Right.
But this, uh, this, can, this diagram or schematic shows the existing configuration. So I'll walk you through what we have and what's proposed.
Okay. That's, that's great.
So currently, we have a 13-foot inside travel lane and then going out to the outer curb, uh, two 12-foot vehicular travel lanes and a seven-foot bike lane. We have a, um, varying, um, width median and then the other side's reciprocal. And then what we're proposing is basically to reduce those vehicular travel lanes to 11-foot travel lanes. So three vehicular travel lanes, 11-foot width, a three-foot buffer and an eight-foot bike lane.
So three lanes.
And that's...
A much bigger, wider bike lane.
Well, one-foot wider bike lane and a, and a three-foot buffer.
Well, figuring the buffer, yeah. Okay.
And then, so, and then from Avenue to Vista Hermosa to the eastern end, um, it's the same, what exists today is the same as what I'd said. It's 13, 12, 12, and then a seven-foot bike lane. And, uh, what we're proposing is two 11-foot travel lanes, a 14-foot striped, uh, buffer and, uh, eight-foot bike lane.
Don't you think that's gonna be weird? People over there that are on those roads are gonna go from three lanes to two lanes and then see this huge striped thing that they can't drive on?
Well, we currently have that situation at the end of Avenue to Pico and some of our arterials where we just stripe it down to a one-lane configuration out like Patrizia, going towards Patrizia. So I, I don't think it'll be weird. I mean, I guess that's an opinion, but...
I don't know. Um, so then...
It's a lot less...
The lower, the lower section there, C, is, is kind of the same over there. Big buffer.
Oh, right. Yeah, correct. That's...
Four lanes and a big buffer.
Right. And that's approaching, uh, Patrizia.
Reduce three lanes to two lanes.
Right. So if we go to Google Maps, we could kind of see what that looks like, because that exists.
Have you done, have you done a study to know that?
Sure.
Going from three to two lanes isn't gonna impact the, the flow and all that good stuff?
Right. We looked at the level of service and the level of service will remain at an A.
Mm-hmm.
An A-plus, actually. It's got more than enough capacity in A.
Okay. And then everything, uh, west of Hermosa is gonna remain three lanes.
Correct.
All the way to the freeway.
Right.
Okay. All right.
Um, could you, I'm thinking back to, um, the general plan days and we were looking at the bike and pet master plan. And I just want to make sure, maybe you could, could review for us briefly, um, the, when you're talking about levels of service and as I recall, it's, you're really talking about intersections and can you talk, I, I just want to get a, get a picture for everyone, including myself, on, we're going like to these two lanes and how that is or isn't gonna, the two lanes, going from three to two lanes, isn't gonna cause, is or isn't gonna cause a bottleneck because the, the intersections are there and the intersections, as I recall, are the bottleneck. So...
So we looked at the, uh, level of service analysis of, of the intersection at Avenue to Vista Hermosa. And so what you're gonna have there is, um, pull back up this cross section. So we're looking at this detailed B. So the right-hand turn movement's still going to exist. You're still gonna have a, a free right like you do. If you, it's, it's really just to envision Avenue La Pata. So when you approach, um, from La Pata going northbound from, say, like a Manassar or from the Dog Park going down towards Avenue to Pico, when you approach the intersection, it's, it's striped so that the right-hand turning vehicles can shift over and make a free, basically it's like a dedicated or a free right-hand turn lane. Um, and then you'll have two, um, through lefts and then, of course, the left-hand turn lanes will, will stay remaining. Um, so we looked at the level of service for the projected, the existing and projected traffic loads without planning area number eight and, um, the toll road connecting. And, um, for it to go to a level of service B, it's up around, um, it's called a VC, um, ratio level. Um, but basically, it, it, the level of service is, it has, um, different scales, like an A. It's, it's just like the grading average. A is really good, free-flowing. B starts to get a little bit more congested. C is what you might experience in a, a more dense, uh, urban environment where you have to possibly slow down and wait through the intersections. D is starting to, um, get really noticeable where you might not even, you start seeing different phases, missing their cycles. So you have to wait through repeated light cycles. Um, E is approaching failing. That's where you're missing a lot of different, uh, signals and, and you have to wait through different cycles and people are getting frustrated. And then F is complete gridlock. So we looked at the intersection evaluations and it's still really low and, which would equate to a very high level of service A. So we have a lot of capacity to stay within that level of service A.
So moving, uh, removing a lane essentially from that portion of Pico isn't going to affect our level of service at all because people...
That's correct.
At worst, people will get, be getting that intersection a little slower and they'll be stopped at that intersection anyway?
Yeah. I don't think they're gonna have to slow down at all. The three lanes were planned for traffic from the toll road and from planning area number eight to be incorporated into those three lanes. So that's what you can envision. That roadway is way overbuilt right now. I mean, like I said, it, it's receiving the same, in that road segment that we're talking about, it's receiving similar road, um, volumes that Presidio is handling.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, Michael, you have another question?
Just as it relates to the, the bike lanes and how, how this is gonna relate to roadways beyond the project area. And this is kind of beyond the scope of this particular project, but it's related. I'd like to know a little more about how the bike lanes will eventually connect and get us down to the coast from, from this project area.
Okay.
And integrated into this planning.
So currently, there's, I mean, just, I guess, are you talking about like big-picture visions of how the bike lanes are gonna go from Talega down to the ocean?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, well, we have, uh, the big-picture vision is we actually have, uh, some conceptual plans that are, are near completion to have a Class 1 bike path, which would tie in the extra wide sidewalks that were developed and are a part of Talega, um, running along the existing Class 1 in front of, um, the commercial area on the, what's the name of that? Is that Pacific Plaza?
Plaza Pacifica?
Plaza Pacifica. Um, and then from that point on, um, the conceptual alignment, at least, would be to, um, to, um, go down along the service road, along Avenue to Pico, from Avenue to Veracruz to, uh, Frontera and Presidio. Um, at that point, then it would, um, the, the ultimate configuration would have grade separated or tunneling underneath the different intersections so that you wouldn't have to, uh, wait or there's no, that you reduce the conflict points. Um, and then it would, um, then cross under grade separated underneath Pico and then it would, uh, essentially follow the drainage channel. And we'd have to create a, a grade separation going through, um, I-5.
Mm-hmm.
And then, uh, it would continue along the drainage channel ultimately to the ocean. I could say that we actually have a grant in the further study of that alignment that Brendan Miller was a part of, um, applying for. And we should hear back on that, um, grant effort this summer.
Right.
And then also, uh, that's...
Just say, this would all just sort of feather in.
It would. This is, um, what we're really talking about here, though, is, is Class 2. So the immediate transition would be, we would take that eight-foot bike lane and transition it to a seven-foot bike lane. And, and we'd just transition the striping over to the existing striping within a se, a couple of hundred feet.
Okay. But we wouldn't have to make any changes in this project area, just beyond it?
No.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Are there any more questions for staff?
Yeah, I have, uh, do you have a picture of, um, how, uh, B and C would look like from a car window of anything that realistic kind of?
Yeah. I, what I have is the picture of La Pata and I can explain to you what it would look like. Um, and so here's Avenue La Pata. And basically, the two-lane configuration would look exactly like what is shown in this picture. You'd have two 11-foot travel lanes. And as you can see, the truck still has ample room here, um, or SUV that typically they're, you know, vehicles take, like pedestrians, they take the shortest route possible. So they hug the inside corner. Um, so there's two 11-foot travel lanes. Then you have the buffer. This would be a really wide buffer, a 14-foot...
Much wider buffer.
Much, much wider buffer. In fact, um, it would be about as wide as from this, this lane stripe to this buffer outside edge. That's about 14 feet. So that would be the buffer width. And then you'd have the eight-foot bike lane, which is shown here. So what we're talking about is two travel lanes, a 14-foot wide striped buffer and then an eight-foot travel lane.
Well, um, not much of a bike expert, but wouldn't it be better to have a little bit wider bike lanes and then not quite as much buffer? That seems like a lot...
You'd think that. And, and, um, that's, that's a good question or, or comment. There's actually some concerns that drivers then would perceive that extra wide bike lane as a travel lane. So it's kind of industry standard where you don't, in practice, put in bike lanes that are wider than eight feet, then you use any extra room as buffer. That's the thought behind it. There's actually been, yeah, there's been presidential cases where people have argued that they perceive the wide bike lane as a, as a travel lane.
Wait.
Good point, though.
I, I do have a question. You know, cars are not gonna be the only, are gonna be traveling this, these roads. Moving trucks, for example, how, how wide are those?
The trucks?
Yeah.
The maximum width of vehicle is eight feet.
A truck?
Yeah.
A big moving truck?
Yep. Biggest, the biggest WB67, the big ones that you see on the freeway, can only be eight feet wide. And that's what you see coming down the roadway currently is eight feet wide. What's traveling on I-5 and 11-foot travel lanes are the, the widest trucks which you see. So...
I'm just wondering why the Beacons truck hit me on Pico a year ago. So...
Bad driver.
Yeah, me. Yeah.
Hopefully he got some money.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, um, then we will go ahead and, uh, open the public hearing. And the first card I have is from Brenda Miller.
Three minutes.
Listen well, my dear. Hello, Brenda Miller, San Clemente resident. Um, I'm gonna lead off with safety here. Um, as someone who crunches the SWITRS data, that's an acronym, my dear, S-W-I-T-R-S, Statewide Integrated Traffic Record System. The data in Orange County from 2003 through 2011, a bicyclist is killed here every 35 days. A bicyclist in that same period is injured every 9.2 hours. Um, for all modes of travel, the Office of Traffic Safety has ranked from 2010 to 2013, Orange County is number five, number six, and number three worst in the entire state amongst 58 counties for speed-related conditions. Um, that has played a big role in the safety of the roadway. Um, now, SCAG has stated that 80% of all roads regionally are arterials and they carry most of the traffic. Um, OCTA's Outlook 2035 predicts that Orange County will have 400,000 more people, 1.4 million more average daily trips, and the average commute time will increase by 166%, meaning your 30-minute commute today in 19 years will become nearly 80 minutes one-way. And why does that happen? It's predicted because the arterials are not multimodal facilities. They're built only for single occupancy vehicles, which is the least efficient and most costly kind of facility to have. Um, I hope those predictions don't come true. But we have an opportunity here to begin to foresee a multimodal future and take plans to accommodate all modes so that we distribute the transportation load amongst different modes of travel that in turn will reduce demand on existing facilities. So that's very important. Um, Councilwoman Ward can tell us on numerous occasions in which she and her husband get on their electric assist bikes and they toodle, uh, through town when the roadways are completely congested. And she's actually been solicited by motorists to trade positions as she speeds by them. We have two opportunities here. Again, uh, reducing demand because the available physical space is gonna be much greater than the public right-of-way. Um, we have mobility benefits, uh, by embracing all modes of travel. And public safety has to be the priority now. If you look at other communities that have not thought into the future and have enabled their roads to be curb-to-curb cars going to central Orange County, I've had that pleasure recently and gone on the 405 freeway off at Euclid to downtown Garden Grove Civic Center. That's about six miles. And it took me 45 minutes to 50 minutes. The quality of life here will diminish. So let's embrace, um, the Class 1 project. You know, if the ADTs increase and the load increases and we have that Class 1, that's what people will use. Go ahead and add the extra lane.
Okay. Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you, sir.
Next, I have Brett Gross.
Good evening. I'm Brett Gross. Um, I want to thank you for taking time to consider this tonight. I'm, I'm so pleased. I'm, I'm partisan. I ride two wheels most of the time. Uh, I have a couple motorcycles and I ride bicycles. And I am, uh, constantly aware of how many options people won't even consider until it's presented to them in a visual way. And I realize that we rats don't like it when you change the maze. And the idea that, oh my God, you're taking away my three lanes, my three lanes that I need. Well, you only think you need them because you've been driving on them. But when you see that two lanes will get you there just as fast, you're gonna be looking over whether it's a motorcyclist or an electric bicyclist who's able to go by, um, on a road that you're not even congested on, but it puts the seed in your mind. There are other ways of doing this. And the fact that we can save money on the road, uh, is, to me, an added incentive. I like the way we've worked into it backwards, though. We're gonna save money. We're being responsible leaders of our community by saving money, um, in doing the striping in this way. That's fabulous. I look at it from the other perspective. We're encouraging people to consider that there are other ways of traveling, um, and giving them the opportunity to do it. Thanks for your, letting me take your time.
Great. Thank you. And the last card I have is Bill Redding. If there's anybody else who wants to speak to this, turn in a card.
Yes, my name is Bill Redding and I've been a resident for quite a while in San Clemente. And first, I want to, uh, thank, uh, this gentleman for making sure that Talega people got this notice, because otherwise I wouldn't have known anything about it. And probably I would have just gone down the road and all of a sudden discovered I've lost a lane. Um, but, um, I think, uh, Mike, my email was forwarded to some of you and a lot of it's been addressed. But mostly, I want to say, this really doesn't make any common sense. This does not meet the common sense test. Um, as a retired chemistry teacher, I, I'm into kinetics and stuff. I do not understand how if you have the same traffic flow volume, whether it's 8,000 or 10,000 or 20,000, if you go from three lanes to two lanes, the degradation of those lanes is gonna accelerate. Now, if you're only gonna repair the road or do it every 10 or 20 years, then heck, just go down to one, if that's the deal. But if you're gonna be maintaining roads and you're gonna put the same amount of travel in less lanes, that defies my understanding of kinetics. Um, I totally disagree. Up and down this freeway that we have 11 feet now that Caltrans has done, if you all live here, do we have more accidents or less accidents from Pico up to Estrella since they've redone those lanes? We've got a lot more accidents. Several of my friends have been in them. And it's because they've been sideswiped by other cars. To me, that's a logical argument that defies what you've said. I don't care what the statistics say. Sometime you have to look at what's commonly seen. Um, maybe it's gonna save money, maybe it's not. I tend to think that it's not going to. I tend to think that it's not going to. I don't like the fact that in the proposal, it says, well, if it doesn't work out, we'll just change it back. Well, why are you gonna spend money twice? Makes no sense to me. And I disagree that you should do this section until La Pata actually opens and you actually get a new count. So I'm just asking you, please, not to send this to City Council. If you do send it to City Council, I can guarantee you that TMC and my neighbors and everybody else in there is gonna show up at City Council meetings, and we're gonna argue against it then. So I'm asking you not to send this on to City Council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And seeing no one else, I will close the public hearing, and I will open this up to Planning Commission discussion.
I'm really conflicted with 11 feet. I really am. And I just, I just think that the buffer could be less and open it up to a little bit wider ability to drive on the road. And I'm really conflicted about that, and I know you say statistically it makes sense, but when I'm on the road and I've crunched down like this in 11 feet instead of 13 feet, I have a better, much better driving experience with 13 feet than with 11 feet. And I just feel crowded in when other cars are passing me for that. So I feel that the buffer could be less, and I certainly agree that we should have to have a bike lane that is gonna be safe. That's important, that's very important to have. But for me, I just feel crowded in on a road that has less width, and I think we could take care of that by reducing the buffer a couple of feet. That's how I feel.
Zen?
I think this project is a terrific idea, and it's apparently there are over, this road is overbuilt, and the capacity is much more than what's needed. I'd like to see this striped area to be narrower, but not to make the travel lane wider, but to give more dimension to the bicycle lane. Maybe it's not just for bicyclists, and I can take my skateboard to cruise on that. As long as you have double solid line on the travel lane side and control the entry point, I think a driver in the normal mind would not get into this lane. With about 14, a very wide painted area, it just looks like a little deserted in my The cost of saving, that's a no-brainer, sorry for that, confusing at the beginning, but the marginal cost really, it's just a difference between, it's just a difference between a little more paint, so that's minimal. And I fully support this one. Thank you.
Michael?
Well, I kind of go along with Wayne on the 11-foot versus 13 by having such a large vacant buffer. And I also agree with Commissioner Wu about maybe having the bike lane a little bit wider. It seems like there's a lot of buffer space there that could be shared for both bike riding and car driving, just to kind of be a compromise. The other thing is, I don't think we ought to do anything until La Pata and all of that stuff is opened up and see what's going on. I think this would be premature of that, and I'm a little bit nervous about the timing of this because of all the work that's going on in Pico anyway. It's a mess. I drive through that intersection all the time with the freeway and everything, and it seems like it's a bit risky at this point in time. I'm not sure why, all of a sudden, we have to do this now. So I'm concerned about those things, and I wonder if we can get a little bit better
Okay, I'll jump in here. I don't, I don't think this is gonna really have a, the opening of La Pata's gonna have an effect on this, because all of this, if I'm not mistaken, all of this is east of La Pata, right? So the people coming down La Pata are mostly gonna be going towards I-5, and they're not gonna be going, you know, more, some will, of course, into Talega, but that's not gonna be the bulk of the traffic. And we go to those two lanes as we sort of get more into the hinterlands of town. You know, regarding the bike lanes, we actually have, we talked a lot about this when we were doing the general plan, we have a responsibility to give as much attention to these alternate modes of transportation as we do to vehicle traffic, so making sure we don't just have, you know, wide enough, but we don't, that we have the right-sized lanes. I think it's interesting what you said about more than eight feet, and drivers think it's an extra lane. That kind of makes sense to me. Yeah, I can see that, see that happening. So to me, eight feet seems about right. And I, it was interesting, I was driving just last week, and it must have been at least a 13-foot, maybe a 14-foot wide road, but I just felt like I almost had too much room. But I want to be careful in saying that, because what keeps coming up after four or five years of talking about the traffic stuff is that distinction between, you know, us as drivers, seeing the world as drivers through our windshields, versus seeing the world as, from the traffic perspective, you know, with lots of different people and the more, you know, analytical way of looking at it. So I do, our experience is important, but I also want to be careful that we also embrace this other, this other perspective that's out there. Bottom line, I'm in favor of this. I think, to the gentleman who spoke, I think my understanding of this is, if we need to restripe, we do it when we do another slurry seal, so there's no real added cost in terms of, you know, if we say we need to adjust the road for this. And we're not going to need to adjust the road, except unless 241 comes into, you know, after, over your dead body, I guess, if it comes into, if it comes into existence, or if we open up Planning Area Eight, which again, is gonna be many years in the future before anything happens with that. So we've got a, you know, we've got, you know, a buffer there. So I think it's, I think it's worthy, I think it's great, it's gonna be great to have those extra buffers for the bike lanes, it'd be much safer. And frankly, I think it'll be a bit safer and help with traffic a bit with those narrower lanes. We see that with, in the older parts of towns where we've actually removed the centerline. And, you know, I live in an older part of town, and there is that friction, and, you know, it's actually, people do drive slower, so I think those techniques, you know, have some, have some merit to them. Michael?
Great points, and I mirror all so far. I think that the project will meet our needs. I think that with proper maintenance, it'll be fine. That would address some of the concerns that the residents have, so we just need to stand on top of that, keep those buffer areas nice and clean and free of gravel and debris. With those, with those things, I think this project would be fine to go forward.
Bart?
Yeah, I'd like to say Tom did a great job on answering all our questions, and I appreciate his expertise, and I'll make a motion if there's no other comments.
Obviously, there's gonna be people downstream of this improvement, and as that gentleman talked about that, I'm assuming you live in this area where we're gonna have less lanes. I think it's gonna be important to make sure we have a good campaign on this to get the word out. I don't think we want to make this whoops what happened, and all of a sudden, there's a lot of people in Talega that are going, what the heck's going on? Because that, that's their connection to their lifeline. And changing it is one thing, but not letting them know that that's coming is another. So whatever we could do to get that notice out so people were gonna understand it, and maybe there's a PR thing, and there, something along the lines that it's, it's not gonna go from driving nice and smooth to rush hour either, because people are gonna be concerned about that. So I'd suggest that that's part of the program.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we forward a recommendation to the City Council to approve the restriping of Avenue de Pico east of the Avenue de Vista Hermosa.
Second?
Motion by Bart, second by Zen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Agatha's ten opposed, so it's five, one. Okay, thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Jim, can you shut that down?
Okay, old business, we have none. Reports of commissioners and staff. Any reports, something from the coastal?
Yes, Coastal Advisory met on May 12, and we discussed paid parking spaces. There was a comparative presented by, actually, a, it was, thank you. There was a presentation by Tom Bonniget regarding revenue generated from 2010 to 2015, and committee member Haskins had gone out on his own and done some research of other coastal communities and what they are currently charging on average. We're about 50 cents lower than other coastal communities. So we talked about how an increase in fee could benefit the city from a revenue perspective, and I think we're gonna be looking at that a little closer in the coming years. The bacteriological monitoring report came in, pretty much usual suspects, Poche Beach and Pier had the higher, had higher levels of bacteria. And the committee is interested in seeing our water testing done later rather than earlier in the week, because there's a turnaround time for that testing. By the time the results come in, you know, too much time has gone by, and it's no longer useful for the, for most of the users of the beaches on the weekends. So we're talking about, and Tom Bonniget's gonna be looking into the possibility of adjusting our testing day from Monday to Thursday, so that the data is a little more current and usable for our weekend users. We talked about the sand replenishment project. It's, North Beach is moving right along with the opportunistic sand, and we're looking at September, October of this year to receive 10,000 yards of sand to make life a little nicer.
What's the source of that sand?
Santa Ana. Santa Ana River Basin is up for grabs, and we're in line to enjoy some of the resources there for taking...
The sand, though, that comes out makes the beaches. So all you're gonna do is probably make that a little bit more sustainable.
We're gonna, I think the alluvial fan will be a little smaller than it usually is. But that's a very good point, I think that's worth discussing.
Because I understand that's the root cause of why our beaches are needed, is that we're not getting nearly the sand we're...
We're not being fed. That's something worth bringing up and having a discussion, and I'd like to share the, what comes out of that discussion with you at another time.
Isn't, didn't we get the sand years ago from Santa Ana also?
Yes, but at that time, it was...
It was horrible sand.
It was full, it wasn't sifted properly. It was full of rocks, and the sand basically just kind of sifted through, and we were left with boulders and locked rocks. So we're doing it a different way this time to avoid that issue.
That's what happens when you do those back alley sand deals.
Does the sand from Bepo come to San Clemente?
It does. With the Long Shore Current, it brings it, it moves it all the way down the coastline, as a matter of fact. And it's returned, so it sort of ebbs and flows. There's certainly a science, but yet generally, yes.
They don't have enough sand to replenish ours.
No, no. It'd be nice. I think we wouldn't have this issue otherwise. Okay, so the larger project is still on track, and we're just entering into the design phase now, so we're about two years out, so we're looking at late 2018, 2019 to see that start to happen. Potential future items. We may be talking about long and short-term beach erosion and structural protection of beach facilities, and there is a city policy that was drafted in 2001 that addresses that. So there's, Tom Bonniget had mentioned possibly revisiting that and updating that. There's also a presentation of the City Social Media Policy and Outreach Program coming our way, and how we can sort of soup that up and make it more effective for us. And the Trafalgar Canyon report is finally completed, and that report is at City Hall, being reviewed by staff now, and we expect a summary at the next meeting, which will occur on June 9 at the Yolanda Hansen Fireside Room located at the San Clemente Community Center at 7:00 PM.
Great. I will mention that the Lining Ordinance Subcommittee, we delayed our last meeting two weeks, so we are meeting tomorrow night. We are kind of entering a bit of a new phase. We've been more doing research and learning, and we're gonna start to look at, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, it's Malibu's dark sky ordinance tomorrow, so we're kind of starting to get into more nuts and bolts, and what should an ordinance look like, what should it look like for our town? So that meeting's tomorrow night.
Exciting.
Okay. Is there anything else or a motion to adjourn?
We have it. Andy?
No, I usually do it, it's at the bottom of the agenda, last item on the agenda is the last item on the agenda.
Okay, I got a light on here. I move we adjourn to the adjourned regular Planning Commission meeting to be held at 6:00 PM on June 8 in Council Chambers at City Hall located 100 Avenue to Presidio, San Clemente, California.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously.